Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting of July 26, 2011. Roberta, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Foye?
And Supervisor Parks?
Here. This morning, for a moment of inspiration, we have a very neat lady, Mary Olson, who is the General Manager of KCLU Radio, 88.3 FM in Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties. It's a home of national public radio and our local news. She was part of an original team that signed KCLU on air 17 years ago and has helped it to grow into an award-winning news station with a large audience throughout the two counties. Mary received her undergraduate degree in journalism from Purdue University and her Master's in Public Administration from Calhoun. Mary also serves on the Board of Senior Concerns and is a member of the Rotary Club of Westlake Village and was also very instrumental in a new building that just came forward. And if you'd like to come up to the microphone, Mary, and let us know about your latest excitement out there and any words of inspiration, are most welcome.
Thank you very much. Mr. Powers and Ms. Rodriguez and Mr. Smith, Ms. Cohen, Supervisor Bennett, Supervisor Long, Supervisor Foye and Supervisor Zaragoza and, of course, Chairwoman Parks, thank you very, very much. I'm honored to be invited here. And I have to tell you, as someone who makes their living talking and being on the radio, and I'm never thought of as someone as having a loss of words, seeing your name on the agenda, speaking in front of the county supervisors with the words "Moment of Inspiration" next to it, is a little daunting. And since I now have three children, some are teenagers, nothing I say, I am told, is ever inspirational, just nagging, but I will do my very best. On behalf of the CLU President, Dr. Chris Kimball, and the Board of Regents, and the KCLU team, I truly just want to say thank you. I want to thank you for your service to the community, our listeners. I want to thank you for your individual and collective support, which all of us have enjoyed so much in these last 17 years. As Chairwoman Parks said, this has really been a banner year for KCLU. And as someone who is so very old, 17 years ago, I was part of the original team, I was a much younger and thinner woman at the time, but nonetheless, I have persevered. And we've come a long way, and we're so deeply appreciative and humbled. In this last year, our News Director, Lance Roscoe, who many of you know, won a National Edward R. Murrow Award. And it was unbelievable to be in New York City, where there are 15,000 radio stations, and there were 89 Murrow Awards given, and your hometown station, KCLU, won one of them. It was amazing. Jim Rondo, our Program Director, three weeks ago, was named as the Best Radio Anchor in Southern California. Again, we were incredibly humbled. And as you said, Ms. Parks, we moved into a brand-new broadcast center two months ago, and we are still pinching ourselves. And we're so excited at how we're going to be able to continue to serve the community with more space. We can now produce a series of documentaries that we're incredibly excited about. This is all possible because of your constituents, because regular folks like you and I have supported KCLU and supported local news. And just very quickly, we're living in an era of media consolidation where four or five corporations own all the radio stations in the country. And we, I stand here before you now, on behalf of my colleagues, to say that's not going to happen here, that we are deeply committed to being local, we're deeply committed to serving our friends, your constituents, as we've done for the last 17 years. And we're going to be here in fires, and we're going to be here in floods, and we're going to be here in earthquakes, none of which, incidentally, we ever want to happen. But in case they do, of course, we're going to be here, and we're going to serve you and your constituents. So I'd just like to mention by name my colleagues, Lance Roscoe, our News Director, Jim Rondo, our Morning Anchor, and our Program Director, Mia Carnet-Shiflett, our Director of Member Services, for saying thank you to each one of you, again, individually and collectively for your support. You're there when Lance and Jim call for interviews, and we thank you. And the most important thing I need to say, besides, again, thank you so very much, is if you don't already have your radios tuned into 88.3, I encourage you, when you leave today, to make sure that happens and continue to listen. And I say thank you.
Thank you, Mary. You know, we're very fortunate to have KCLU in our county. When you look at it, for a large county that we are, there's no news station on television, and so we really rely on KCLU and the excellent reporting that's done, particularly in emergencies. We have, from the Board of Supervisors, a resolution for you. It's in honor of KCLU's Broadcast Center receiving outstanding awards of media excellence. So I'm going to come down and present this to you.
Thank you.
If I might, Mary, yeah, it's on my radio station. I listen to you daily. I love that Lance does these in-depth interviews, that you, your whole programming isn't about soundbites, except during campaign times, but, and they're very clever soundbites, but you do an excellent service for our county, and you have always been there during disasters when we need the coverage and we need the support, and your whole team is just, does an excellent job.
Thank you, Supervisor Long, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And your voice is so familiar. You have to be on a radio.
I sound much younger, though.
You look great. I'm gonna, let me read this, because it's pretty remarkable. Whereas National Public Radio Station KCLU, a community service as CLU, University in Thousand Oaks, has provided outstanding local news programming since 1994 to Ventura County at 88.3 and Santa Barbara's 102.3. And whereas KCLU has been recognized for its excellent news coverage by professional organizations, including the Associated Press Television Radio Association, the Los Angeles Press Club, the Radio/Television News Directors Association of Northern California, and the Radio and Television News Directors Association of Southern California. And whereas KCLU was recently honored with nine awards and three ceremonies that celebrated KCLU's commitment to in-depth reporting and news coverage, including five Edward R. Murrow Awards, given in the Small Market Radio Division, and three 2011 Mark Twain Awards for Broadcast Excellence. And whereas Director Jim Rondo, News Director Lance Roscoe, News Anchor Dave Meyer, were awarded Best Continuing Coverage for their work on the Simi Valley Lab Explosion. And Mr. Roscoe received Best Spot News Story for the deadly drive, coverage of a runaway big rig, and Best Sports Reporting for It's More Than a Game, a feature story about the 100th High School Football Game in the Santa Paula-Filmore Rivalry. KCLU also received the 2011 John Swett Wright Radio Award for Media Excellence, which was presented to John North for his in-depth documentary, K Through 12: On the Edge, about the state school funding crisis. And whereas KCLU has recently moved to a new state-of-the-art building, yay, Murrow continues to provide outstanding news and in-depth stories, give listeners the best in national programming, and offer a forum for the discussion of important local and news topics. Now therefore be resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring KCLU Broadcast Center for its outstanding awards in 2011 for excellence in journalism, and wishes a continued success in providing first-rate programming to our communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, thank you. We're really honored. Thank you so very much.
Let's grab a picture with you, too. Give it to the community.
One, two, three.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Good to see you, Mary.
It was great to see the community get behind and help fund that new station, which was sorely needed. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Foye, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and justice for all.
Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of July 12. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
And we have a second from Supervisor Foye, if we could all please vote. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda, then, is our Agenda Review, and I'll go to Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Chair Parks. Our one-meeting streak of no changes is over. We do have an addendum, Consent Agenda Item, from the CEO's office to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the Ventura County Probation Agency to be the designated County of Ventura Agency to provide post-release community supervision. There's also an Agenda Item of 10:30 time certain, recommendation of Supervisor Bennett and Sheriff Dean for the County of Ventura to host a Foster Children Career Day on Friday, November 11. On Consent Agenda Item 15, we received a revised board letter. On Consent Agenda Item 17, clarifying this to be heard under the Healthcare Agency, not HCA Ventura County Medical Center.
That was Item 17.
Item 17.
Yes.
And then Consent Agenda Item 24, Exhibit 2, the Sheriff, addendum to agreement Exhibit B, Paragraph 3, should read $23,800.
Okay.
On time certain, Item 27, there's a request to continue to August 9 at 10:30 a.m. Item 27. And then lastly, Regular Agenda Items 30 and 35, requests that items be heard together as they are related. And that's it, thank you.
No more?
No. Yeah, right. Okay.
And does the Board have any items that they wish to also change or pull out from the agendas?
If I could, can I pull 14 and 16?
And are there any others? Okay, I would ask, and I can wait until the time that it comes before us, but I would also like to hold off on Item Number 34. And I would ask that it be continued, because I haven't had an opportunity yet to speak with our department on this.
Madam Chair, I have a PowerPoint on 34 and comments, and I don't mind pulling the whole thing right now, or when we get to the item, doing it, and then taking no action.
Okay.
So, but...
Well, as long, you know, if you want to present that, I do want, I will ask that it be continued at that time after your PowerPoint, if that works for you.
Sure, that'd be good.
Okay, we'll do it that way.
Great, thank you.
Then we won't continue.
I mean, my request at the end was going to be, you know, not to have any action take place, so it'd be consistent with what you're talking about.
That's great, all right. With that, do we have a motion to accept all those changes?
If you make the motion, you have to repeat all the changes. Sorry.
And we have a second from Supervisor Long, if we could all please vote. Okay.
It's nice to be in fine company, that's right.
Three of us are batting a thousand. Our next item, then, will be going to our Consent Agenda Items, but since two of them have been requested to poll for discussion, why don't we do that first? So, Item 14, Supervisor Foye, Behavioral Health Department, and if we have our Behavioral Health Department representative up here?
Look at that, we do. Good morning. Appreciate you being here. I guess I'm just looking at this as, it looks like we're going to spend about $275,000 in outreach money. I know that money's always tight in mental health, and I just, sometimes I just get really frustrated, the idea that we're going to go out and spend all this money to go out and tell people things that, I always believed that a lot of these people already know how to come to, you know, come to the organization, help get their help. And a lot of times, we just keep spending this money when, you know, we're always saying we need more money to do the service. And so, this is part of my conclusion, that is, I don't know if this is just a trend that's going on, that everybody's saying, we just got to go out and keep communicating, 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 versus use the money to really help the people.
To provide services.
Because, I mean, when you talk $275,000, you can do a whole lot for a lot of people, versus, you know, I already saw that, I already knew, yes, I already know how to get to the different mental health department I need, and that kind of thing. That's my only problem with this, is that we have a tendency to be doing a lot of this lately.
When we first did an assessment of the entire county, when MHSA first came on board, two of the areas that were identified as issues for the underserved communities, that we were not in fact serving appropriately, were for both the Mixteco population and the farmworkers. And over the last four years, as we have continued to provide services and work on enhancing services throughout our community, those two areas have remained areas of issue for us, that we have not in fact done sufficient and strong outreach to bring these individuals into treatment when and if they need it. So this project is under a component called Innovation. It's the last component to roll out with MHSA, and it is to do short-term projects that are almost research-like projects. They're not supposed to last more than three, up to maybe five years at the most, in which you put out an issue statement, and then you work on trying to find a new and innovative way to address that issue. And so for us, the issue is, how do we more effectively outreach to our farmworker population and our indigenous Mixteco population, and actually find ways that are effective to provide services to them? So that's what these projects are. They won't go on in perpetuity, they are again for up to maybe three years. And if we find effective ways to actually be treating these individuals, those programs in need to roll into our more solid, sustainable projects.
I'm just curious, though, in the sense that you've been doing this, and that section or that sector has not, is it, could it be, though, that part of the sector has some fear on issues of legality and all that stuff that we do?
Yes.
And so no matter what you do, it's really not going to make a difference? Because you talked to some of the other communities that have farmworkers that are legal, and they take advantage of the system, and they have no fear of the system. So I'm just wondering, are we still just going to be spending money on something that's not going to change? Because if I've got a fear of showing up at some place that could cause me problems that we're spending?
Well, that's one of the things we're hoping to look at, is in fact, how will these individuals access services? Is it because they don't need the services, because we're not outreachingly appropriately? Is it because of their immigration status? We really don't know.
Right, okay.
We have a couple of comments here. Supervisor Long?
Well, as I see this, this isn't, the funds aren't being spent to create radio ads necessarily and print materials, it really is to put, like, promotorias out into the community. And with the Mixteco population, they don't have a written language. And so there is totally a different language spoken, and cultural differences, and no question, there's that, well, it's, it's, there is that issue of government, and reaching out to them and actually being there to help. So that has to be bridged, and you don't bridge something like that instantly, overnight, by any means. You have to, it has to come from developing some of the Mixteco population as your advocates, and as your linkage to the larger group, and again, to be able to build that trust. So it does take time, and it certainly does take resources. But the, to me, the goals on this is certainly to provide them services that will keep them a healthy community, the whole issues related to prevention and healthcare, and keeping them healthy, and providing them the resources so the, they can assimilate into our community. So it's, it's a challenge.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to add to that, yesterday they had a health fair over in Oxnard, over in 5th and Ventura, by the county agencies, providing information on mental health and other health issues, and how to assimilate into the society, and not to be afraid to come up and say, hey, I need help, and so forth. In the long run, I think it helps all of us, because if some of those individuals are ill and they need help and so forth, they'll have the opportunity to get that help and that assistance. And not only was the health people there, also the public agencies, or public safety officials, or Assurups, or Highway Patrol, or individuals that were there to help all these individuals. So I think it's an educational process, and I think it's a good process, and it'll help us in the long run, all of us.
We are hoping that through this project, we will learn more about what the issues are that face these individuals. We know that they are certainly on the margins of our society at this point in time, and really don't know how to outreach or access services. And we know there's a great deal of stigma. So the goal here is to really educate and to understand by utilizing, as Supervisor Long noted, promotorias and other individuals that are advocates for these groups, to really go out there and ask them, what are their needs? What is it that they could use support with, and why don't they access services as they're currently offered? So we would hope that three years from now, we can come back to you and say that through this informing process, we have identified ways to more effectively reach.
And some of those individuals are learning Spanish and English.
Some of them are learning Spanish and English. We know that the children are often bullied in the schools because they're singled out. So there's multiple levels of issues for both the children as well as the adults.
And it's not just a language issue, it's also a cultural issue.
That's right.
And one of the ways that we could have helped this is to, and including myself, all of us as board members, is to get some people with diversity on the mental health board.
That's right.
We are lacking that, and that's a good outreach forum right there. So it's something to consider when we next appoint. We hope to do that, okay? Supervisor Long?
Should we leave it separate, both of them separate?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
And let's go then to the next item that you pulled from the agenda, which I believe was at 16?
16, yeah, maybe we could, oh, here she comes.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm Narci Egan, Assistant CFO for the Healthcare Agency.
Great, I appreciate you coming down. I just had some questions on, you have a couple of these, 16, 17, 18, on these different items you have that are increasing these encumbrances. And I've just noticed, I mean, there's just not a lot of detail here. I look at one of these with the labs, you know, going from 100,000 to 1.5 million dollars. And I know you, after making some conversation with our CEO, there's reasons why you're doing that. I'm just looking at these board letters, and there's just not as much detail and as much why you're doing it, what did you do last year, what are you doing this year, what's the difference? And I think it's important that we have the opportunity to understand, you know, really all the detail of what you're doing, when you figure that we spent on this one board 16, 2.8 million, now we're going to 9.9 million dollars. I mean, there's a lot of encumbrance that you want to put out there, and it would be great to have the understanding of that.
Okay, Supervisor Foye, what we have in the, in the, in this item is a listing of, initially, the process that we follow is we open up for most of these vendors on the list 100,000 in PO. Otherwise, when it comes into July 1st, we would not have an opportunity to be able to pay the vendors. The other, you know, analysis that we do is we wait until we get all the documentation as well as the actual expenditures for the prior year. What we would do in the, in the next presentation is be able to provide you with the prior year expenditures. And to sum all of the expenditures that were listed here, we are presenting to you 9.9 million of expenditure for 2011 and '12. The actual expenditures associated with these vendors is about 7.7 million. The increase of 2.2 million actually encompasses most of the services that will be related to the implementation of the Low Income Health Program, which is the expansion of the coverage initiative, and that's about a million, 1,005,000. Also, in addition to that, we have a project, which is the scanning of the medical records and the x-ray, x-ray films that currently are being stored and being in position for the electronic health record. So that's about 750,000, 250,000 of which is earmarked for radiology, 350,000 is for the medical records, and about 150,000 is to start... the medical records, and about 150,000 is to start the clinic records. Now, we have also included in this, in this item, access information management, which is our storage, location or site, which is, we spend about 313,000 of that every year. That will go away once we have all of these medical records positioned for scanning. Now, what we have, if we take the thermal asset management, last year, we spent about 254,000 in preventive maintenance of several radiology equipment, as well as laboratory equipment. This year, what we are doing is we are taking in-house the management of those preventive maintenance and doing it ourselves in the radiology department. So we will be the one to call the vendors, such as Phillips and Siemens, and basically, you know, save some of those dollars in the management service that we are paying for. The laboratory is a big example, Airepa Lab, is actually a reference lab that deals with our esoteric lab procedures. And that actually, we have spent about 1,857,000. These are all related to cancer treatment that we do not do in our lab department. And we are expecting a reduction of that by about 138,000.
Okay. Well, I guess that's what I was trying to say, is now when you sit back and you explain it, and there's a little bit more detail.
Yes.
You see that the, going from the 2.8 to the 9.9, it really wasn't really looking at 2.2, and you had real reasons of exactly what you wanted. And I understood that for, I'm just saying, looking at this, it does help us if we have a little bit more understanding of what you're doing, instead of seeing all these numbers. If there's a way to put it out that's readable and understandable would be really good.
We will include that in the next, in the next presentation of the board letter. We will include the prior year expenditures for reference.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Foy, appreciate it. I think you make a good point there. Could you, could you explain, I think, all of these were encumbered at 100,000, and now they've, now we have the new number. So would it be our procedure to just say, hey, until we get the numbers, we encumber at 100,000, and then we come back with this? Is that why, I mean, did it get budgeted at this 100,000, just almost as a placeholder until we got it figured out? Is that...
Correct. Because typically, in June, prior to the end of the year, purchasing would open up 100,000 of deals for each and everyone. That is to cover us until we are able to present to your board the actual, or the expenditures, the estimate that we have for the following, for the following year.
So the reason you originally chose 100,000 was just to cover you for this first month until you can get to us with that?
Correct.
That's helpful to have that information.
And if I may, that's also the statutory limit on the purchasing agent's authority.
Right.
If you come back, like I said, if there's opportunity to put in what you had last year, that would be a very simple understanding of what you're doing and why the increase. I think everybody can understand what you're trying to accomplish. But I appreciate you giving us that explanation. If we could have that, it'd be great understanding. Also, as the public looks at this, it makes it easier for them to understand, too.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
If I may just add to that, too, that there are revenues to offset all these cost increases, and...
That's what I'd be fine with.
Yeah, which would lead, leading to a very positive, not what bottom-line funding.
Right. And I appreciate some of the stuff you take in-house, that you can do cheaper now that you get it. And I mean, all this, that's good. I know you're doing all the right things to do it. I just, it just would be nice to understand a little bit more of this. That's great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Now, we have gotten those two items dealt with on our consent agenda. So what I would propose then is to have a motion to accept all but item 14 on the consent agenda, so we can vote on 14 separately as you request. So we have a motion by Supervisor Foy, and a second by Supervisor Zeragosa to approve items 10 through 25, minus number 14. If we could all please vote. Thank you. And that passes unanimously. Then the next item then would be looking for a motion for item 14. This is the innovation component of the Mental Health Services Act.
So moved.
A motion by Supervisor Bennett, second by Supervisor Zeragosa. If we could all please vote on that. And that motion passes four to one. Our next item on the agenda would then be going to our regular agenda items. And the first...
Board comments?
Oh, well, there's that, too. Yes. Do we have any public comments? No. Okay. So we could go ahead and do a board comments, and then we'll go to our regular agenda item. So with the board comments, I'll start as I always do. Supervisor Foy?
Thank you very much. I'd like to adjourn in memory of the people on this list and call out one. Nicole Anderson, she is the police officer of Simi Valley that was killed in that airplane crash in Arizona, Winslow, Arizona. Tragic. Also, Supervisor Parks and I had the opportunity to attend the Fire Academy the other night, graduation, which was tremendous. And I think she has some other things that Supervisor Parks will talk about she also did. But it was just great, great opportunity. It was great to see the graduates. We had two young women who had graduated there, and I know Fire Chief Roper was saying it was getting a little tougher to get some of the women to be able to qualify, but it was great to see them do it, and they did a good job. One of those women I knew from some CrossFit class I took, and this woman can qualify. She's, she's got the ability, one of those kind of women that can do 50 pull-ups and that whole thing. She's, she's tough. So it was...
Is that CrossFit?
It's called CrossFit. It's kind of, yeah. Anyway, but, so it was great, great to see that happen, and it was, it was a nice ceremony with a lot of attendance. So good to see. And then also, I wanted just to congratulate all the different kids out of the District Four who got these scholarships, you know, to colleges for the arts, and it was tremendous. There's almost every single high school, somebody qualified, and it was just great to see that, and wish them all the best. My comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you, and good morning. Just to comment quickly, they had the ribbon cutting last week for the Arnu CB Museum, which is here in Port Huanimi, and is a beautiful building, and it has been positioned outside of the fence so that even though it's on Navy land, it can get clear public access to it. It's a 35,000-square-foot museum. It's still evolving with exhibits still yet to be come, put in place and recognized for the history of the CBs in our nation. The CB started in 1942, and we, in World War II, 85% of the CBs went through Port Huanimi of the 325,000 CBs. So it has just an incredible history, honor, and dedication to our country, and the CB can-do spirit was surely shown in the museum. 12 million dollars raised, dollars yet to be raised, again, to continue building on the exhibits inside. But it was a long time coming, a lot of effort put forward by a real core group in our county. Bob Quinn, who used to work for the county, was one of the leaders, and Steve Thomas, a significant contributor of BMW in Camarillo, and many others. It was, it was good to be there to see some of the elderly retired CBs as they walk through, and the memories, you could hear them talking, telling stories to their children and their family with the different exhibits. So if you get a chance, it is open. Get by to see it. We should certainly support all our museums, but this one has real roots in this county as an important piece of our history. And then I have a list to ask folks to adjourn in memory. And one, two I'd call out. One is the Dr. Eugene Nigle, who served in the US Army during the Kareem War as a battalion surgeon, recipient of the Silver and Bronze Star, Camarillo Residence Pact, as General Medicine. And he was the chief pathologist at Seaton Medical Center, as well as Community Memorial Hospital, longtime resident of our county. And also, as you all know, Christine, our auditor controller, is a born and raised native of Norway. And the tragedy that we've all been reading about and hearing on the news that's occurred in Norway has just touched all of us, and should touch all of us. Yet, lots of information to come out as to the why, but the tragedy and the pain that the country's going through right now, and its families and survivors of the victims, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of the Norwegian victims. May love light their way, and their memories ever be in their hearts of their loved ones. Christine is, for variety of reasons, traveling home, and she will carry this for us to recognize the, our feelings. Thank you, Christine. And that's it.
I will take that to the palace directly.
Thank you.
And Supervisor Zeragosa?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to also adjourn in memory of those folks on this list. And as I mentioned earlier, I had the opportunity to attend the farmworker health fair over in Oxnard, and was attended by many county agencies and public safety agencies in the city of Oxnard, the many individuals that really helped out in this, in this health fair. Additionally, I had, yesterday, on behalf of myself and Supervisor Long, had the opportunity to, with my pleasure really, to honor two young men from Boy Scout troop 238 in Oxnard, the Oxnard Elks Club, Jake Lee and Connor Vera Ochoa, for their outstanding achievement of ranking, of the rank of Eagle Scouts, which, as we all know, is the highest scout merit badge that they can earn. And also additionally, there's an exceptional scout master, Tim Nyx, who's going to leave, you know, the Boy Scout after many, many years of being with the, with the Boy Scouts. And I've talked into him, says, Supervisor says, I don't know what I'm going to do, you know, it's just, I've been with the Boy Scouts for such a long time. Got pretty emotional, you know, but it was great. He did a good job, you know, in helping the kids. And additionally, too, you know, I also went over to the CBC Museum grand opening and the ribbon cutting. And my grandson is here from Fort Worth. He's 17 years old and getting ready to graduate. So he says he was going to join the service, and he was looking at joining the Marines. And now, after looking at what the CBs are doing, he says, hey, wait a minute, I might just look at, see what the CBs can do. And we had an opportunity to meet with Captain McEw and some other folks that were there, and really gave him a good, a good talking to, so maybe, maybe he'll join. And it was great. And one of the major contributors is for, was the city of Oxnard, you know, to that museum. They gave them a tremendous amount of money. That's going to be a benefit to all of us. There's a big multiplier there, times three or so, you know, that's going to help the total community. But it's a beautiful museum. If you have a chance to go visit it, you don't have to go through the gate. It's open to the public, you know, right before you get to the Ventura Gate, you turn right into the, into the parking lot of the museum, and it's just great. You should go visit it. That's all I have.
Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. Friday, I've got to go, a real joyous celebration, the Ohio Island Conservancy acquired over a mile of the Ventura River for the Ventura Steelhead Preserve. And we got beautiful, the old ranch house there as part of the property. But that Conservancy is just doing a wonderful job, and they have a vision, along with lots of other people in West Ventura County, of having a corridor, a natural open space corridor that's going to connect all the way from the Los Padres Mountains all the way down to the river mouth. This is one of the essential components of that. So I want to congratulate the Ohio Island Conservancy for that acquisition. Saturday was Lock and Cheetah Community Cleanup Day. I just would challenge any supervisor to find me a community that takes more advantage of their community day, or their cleanup day than Lock and Cheetah. Is that right? It was unbelievable.
We're going to have one in Orono.
These people had a lot as big as this room. They had piled it 10, 15 feet high in advance of the day, so that when the day came, all they did was take the tractor and just start loading those things. They were just constantly having to call for more and more trailers. That community just, just really throws it. So it'd be fun. I'd like to actually watch Piru after, after watching Lock and Cheetah on the cleanup day. But I really want to thank our staff. Those cleanup days are just wonderful for our communities, and I know it's a, it's a challenge for them, and they have to get out on the weekend to do it. So I want to let our CEO know how much we appreciate those cleanup days. And then this Friday through Sunday, that's the 29th, 30th, and 31st, is Ventura County Stand Down for Veterans, and that's going to be at the Armory here in Ventura. And just for all the supervisors to pass on, in case veterans contact you, there will be transportation from four sites in Oxnard over there, and that's Catholic Charities, Ventura County Rescue Mission, Employment Development Department, and the Community Action Program, from Port Huanimi at the Housing Authority, Simi Valley at the Samaritan Center, Thousand Oaks, the Lutheran Social Services. And those are all places where there'll be transportation to Ventura, so if, if in your community, so people are asking it. They're going to get, you know, the showers, the clothes, but they're also going to get social services, eye exams and classes, employment assistance, legal assistance if they needed, dental and medical assistance, and housing information. It's a great day to try to help veterans that have fallen on tough times after, after doing their duty to the country. So I wanted to let everybody know about that. All the Oxnard pickup times are at 7:00. Port Huanimi's pickup time is 7:30, Simi Valley, 8:00, Thousand Oaks, 8:00 and 9:00 are both times that they're going out. And the final thing, I just want to congratulate Supervisors Long and Zeragosa, the CB, the opening of CB Museum. Just about the first month that I was on the Board of Supervisors, 10 years ago, they came to us saying, hey, we want to open up this museum, and they had this vision, and they were talking about it. And so now, 10 years later, to see it actually, actually come together, must be really satisfying for people in your community. So thank you very much. And I know you guys had the help in terms of helping them with fundraising and patching it together, so congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bennett. Thank you also Supervisor Long for closing in honor of the Norwegian victims. Our hearts do...
And could I close in honor of the people on my list?
Yes. Did you want to call any of them out?
I'm fine.
Okay. Been having a very busy week. Wednesday, the Casa Canaia MAC met, and also, they're now looking at doing a big community beautification event, and they want to actually go and help people who aren't able to do their own lawns and, you know, go to the homes of people who are having a hard time with upkeep and helping them out. And they would like to combine it with a tree planting, and so we're looking at it in, looks like the spring, so working on a big event there. So that's nice. I think another example of the benefit of forming that MAC. And I also wanted to thank Sergio for, he's come out a few times to explain the flooding issues in that area, which are complex but very important issues. So that was great to see him there again, as well as Jay Spurgeon, who's now the Public Works Director for the City of Thousand Oaks, who lives in that area and attends and has been really helpful in dealing with the types of road issues that encircle that area. So it's been nice to have that support. And then Thursday evening, I was honored to be able to have our state controller, John Chung, come speak at my quarterly dinner series I have there. We had about 85 people show up, and Supervisor Long attended that, and just was impressed on his depth of background and experience, as well as obviously his grasp of the finances and economy of a state of California. And really, the breadth and depth of what he got into was very telling, from talking about the economy, to the unemployment rate, to legislative, legislators' pay, which he held back for a little while there when they didn't pass the budget, talking about redevelopment agencies, and about the state debt, and how we got to where we are. So that, I thought, was pretty informative and fortunate to hear from him directly.
I'd just add a couple of things, and our auditor was also there. The, I asked him a question about the budget and the risk we have, and he says, we better have Plan B.
That's right.
As we said, he doesn't see resources coming along, so.
And what I thought was interesting, too, while his focus is, you know, obviously on the finances, he thought that one of our weaknesses is our education, that we really need to get our students educated, otherwise, we are just being outpaced by other countries, and that will hurt us in the long run. So I thought that was a pretty perceptive comment. Additionally, so it starts Monday, or Wednesday and Thursday, and then Friday was able to do the academy. Saturday, attended a wonderful slideshow presentation by Ed Lawrence, who's... Saturday, attended a wonderful slideshow presentation by Ed Lawrence, whose collection has recently been purchased by the consortium of agencies in Thousand Oaks. And he was before us showing us some of those old photos he's taken of Thousand Oaks, you know, sheep along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and also it was great to see that his collection finally was purchased, and that will always be with our public agencies there, and I think that's really important. And then in the evening was able to go to the Stagecoach Inn Museum, the Caneo Valley Historical Society puts on a Don and Donya Triumpho Award, and awarded some great individuals, Ruth Ann Vegan and Dave Crawford out there. And then also, the following day, Sunday, was able to attend a Girl Scout Gold Award. We don't have too many of those, I go to a lot of Boy Scout Awards, so that was nice. And the three young ladies that received it, one is Pam Cheng, who did her Gold Award on trying to enlighten the Oak Park community about water conservation, and taught young children, and established a website, and may have contributed the fact that Oak Park's one of the few places that are actually meeting their allotted amount of water that they can use. Amy Bellingeri was able to put together a really nice program that, let's see, I'm trying to remember. Well, what was Amy's project? It's just so nice to see them going out there and working in the community. Aneisha, this other young lady, put together a program that taught kids band in junior high or middle school, because of funding requirements, they aren't able to have that program, and then took the band to a senior living home and was able to entertain the seniors there. So I think that was a wonderful project too. And I remember Amy, so I'll get back to it. Additionally, some of the interesting things that we've seen in our facts and history, July 26th is All or Nothing Day, Day of Extremes, the time to go for broke, but I don't know if that's such a good idea. It was nineteen, no theoretically, no, 1952 was Mickey Mantle's Grand Slam, hit his first Grand Slam, that was kind of neat. And then I think one of the highlights for Thousand Oaks this last week, or last two weeks, was thirty Maestronauts from Thousand Oaks-based Amgen were aboard a space shuttle at Atlantis. So these are little mice that they're calling Maestronauts, and they lifted off Friday, July 8th, and they helped scientists carry out a bone density experiment, so. Ready for the Maestronauts?
We'll claim them as our own.
Okay. And then with that, I'm going to also ask that we close in honor of two people on this list. One of them also was someone who came and spoke to us at our moment of inspiration, and this was the Navajo Code Talker, you might remember, Joe Morris. He passed away using his native language and transmitting messages successfully toward a Japanese codebreaker, so that was, he played a very important part in our history, and I know he'll be very much missed. With that then, I'll go to our regular board items.
Madam Chair, before you go, I would like to adjourn in memory of Rick Hamilton. And he was really active in our local community agricultural leadership program advisory committee for the U.S. Naval Academy, president of the Ventura Maritime Foundation, past president of Ventura County Taxpayers Association, co-op of Santa Barbara Bank of Trust, Board of Directors, and I'd like to ask the Board to adjourn in memory of him also. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just remembered what Amy Bellingeri did, and that was taught others, youngsters, survival skills, took them out into the wilderness and taught them survival skills, that was nice. And I didn't mention the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy, which was able to, one of the, that meeting was last night, but one of the things they are appreciative of is that a court has confirmed their, the validity of using cameras stoplight at a stop sign, not stoplight, in the park, which nets the Conservancy a million dollars a year. That's amazing. Yes.
I failed to mention too, you know, that this weekend in Oxnard, at Plaza Park, we're having the Salsa Festival, you know, normally the two days get probably about forty.
Are you going to be dancing?
I'll be dancing, no, I'm not. No, but there will be some, I think Morehouse is going to be.
Yeah, Crowe Morehouse.
And they raise a lot of money too for good causes too, so, the Salsa Festival. I think Mark's going to be there taking some of the salsa.
Well, I'll give a plug too for the Camarillo Taste Camarillo on Sunday, raises a lot of money that go from Metal, Metal Lark puts it on, raises thousands of dollars that go to local community projects. And it's a great afternoon, one to four, at the ranch.
Excellent. Well, it's a busy time for all of us. Our next agenda item after board comments is our Agenda Item Thirty. Oh, before we do that, we actually had an addendum item that was a consent item, and that one was Item Thirty-Eight, and we didn't add that to the consent when we voted, so could we have a motion to approve the addendum Agenda Item Thirty-Eight? Thank you. And this was the one about the post-release community supervision.
Okay, so we're not going to have a presentation on that at all? I, you know, I know this is a straightforward, to designate this, which is required by August first.
We have staff here if we would like to have some introduction on this.
Well, I think if they just give a broad scope of what, if you're prepared to it this time, Mark, because I think the sooner this board understands what this work that's going to be undertaken by this committee, at least some highlights of it. I received a very detailed report from CSAC, and it's really caught my eye, if the Board's okay with that.
Mr. Verrilla, would you like to make that presentation, or your staff?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Powers. Mark Verrilla, Chief Probation Officer. This board resolution was required by California Department of Corrections to designate the supervision entity for each of the counties for the post-release community supervision population. And these are individuals who are currently in state prison right now that fall under that non-non-non, which is non-serious, non-violent, non-serious sex offender category that will be coming back into our community after serving their prison sentence, except now they're going to be under the jurisdiction of the county probation agency versus state parole agents. So we're talking about a population of about four hundred people that'll be coming out of state prison in the next couple of years. So this resolution will go to the California Department of Corrections and will allow the state prisons to communicate with each supervision entity, letting us know who's coming out, what are the dates, where are they going to be, what communities they're going to be going back to within Ventura County. This will allow us to plan appropriately for their return. And there's a couple of other items on the latter. The first one is to have the CEO be a part of the Community Corrections Partnership, and the second is to designate the Director of Behavioral Health to be an executive committee member on the Community Corrections Partnership. So there are three items on this particular board letter. In a nutshell, the Community Corrections Partnership is made up of, by statute, fourteen individuals in our county, it's going to be thirteen, that are going to come together, and their primary function is to develop an implementation plan that'll come back in front of your board for final approval. And within the Community Corrections Partnership are seven executive committee members who will be the voters on that plan and will bring it forward to your board. Well, our first meeting of the entire Community Corrections Partnership is going to be this Thursday afternoon, and the executive committee of the CCP has already met at least a couple times in the CEO's office, so we're underway, and we'll be talking about some ideas.
Ask a question?
Supervisor Coy, the Supervisor Long?
I was just going to, based on the ordinance of the law, that this is what we have to do, and we are selecting probation to be ahead of this. Most other counties are doing the same thing.
Yes, the Assembly Bill 109, and then the Cleanup Language Bill, Assembly Bill 117, designates the Chief Probation Officer to chair this Community Corrections Partnership. And it's really based on a model that we've had in place here in the county for quite a number of years called the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council. So what they did was they took that model and they created the Community Corrections Partnership. The Chief Probation Officer chairs it, but it's really ultimately the decision of the group in terms of developing the implementation plan.
Great, good, okay.
This Community Corrections Partnership will also be in place as we start to move through the whole realignment.
Yes.
Issues, which probably are even more, well, as complicated and challenging. So that's, the good side of it is that we'll get this up and running and start the conversation with the, all of us facing yet some fiscal impacts, and the courts are facing even more fiscal impacts, and of course, they are going to be a significant part of this, partner in this realignment and the partnership piece of it. And we have funds that are going to be already dedicated to us for this.
Correct.
And the test will be, but these are committed for this first year, so the whole realignment, of course, will then roll out what will be the longstanding commitment of resources to us at the local level as this transition takes place in realignment. So there's still that unknown. And we have planning dollars also that will be coming our way for this. So it's significant, but I'm happy we're going to move ahead and that there's cooperation of the leadership around the table to do this, and it's all good. And as always, I think we're fortunate because we have had the experience of the JJ, the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council. So we have had that, already that interaction between the agency leadership and the focus, so I think we'll hit the ground running on it, it's just a lot yet to come down the pipe.
Yeah, I envision that this group is, we have a start date of October 1st for realignment, which means that we're going to start receiving our first group of the post-release community supervision folks in October. But throughout the year, we'll start to see an increase in all of our numbers, our jail bed commitments, and those people coming back onto our probation agency caseloads. I envision this group will be working together for the years to come. Although we have our figures for the first year of realignment, we're really going to be receiving funds, hopefully, in the subsequent years, so this group is going to be responsible in tasks with how this is going to impact the county in years to come as well.
And also, this is not the population that's talked about in that other, that early release that's.
Correct.
Being proposed by the court action. So this is realigning.
Yeah, this is realigning. And it's also a way to get the prison population down to the level that is mandated now by the U.S. Supreme Court as well.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza?
Mark, I understand you're also going to be working with quite a few other agencies that are going to assist the CCP. And then the E-Board, you're, what, the seven members are going to be recommending to the Board of Supervisors whatever the CCP comes up with, is that, is that the way it's going to work?
Yes, that's the way it's going to work. The implementation plan's going to come, and it's required, the board approved the implementation plan before we put it into practice here locally.
And the E-Board's been picked now by the CCP, or?
Yeah, the E-Board is already set. With the action today, if you accept the recommendation, then the E-Board has been selected, the seven members are on it.
Out of the four hundred, how many are we going to get in October, or does it start in October, or we just?
It starts in October, and I don't know what our first month's figures are, but it's approximately about forty of those, of that population that'll be coming locally that'll be released. Now, these are folks that were going to be released anyway from state prison. The only change is now that the county is now responsible for the supervision monitoring and all of the treatment in relation to those.
Mark, give us a definition again of the non-non-non-non.
Non-non-non is, it's the non-serious.
That's important to, for the public.
It is, and I think everybody is under the assumption that we're taking over state parole, and that's not the case. State parole will still be active in the community, they are taking the serious offenders that are coming out, the most serious is categorized by the state. What we are getting are those people who are coming out of prison, their commitment offense is a non-serious felony, it's a non-violent felony, and it's a non-serious sex offense. We will be getting some sex offenders back onto our caseloads, but those who score the highest on the static risk assessment are going to stay with the state. So we will ultimately be responsible for this population, and again, it's estimated about four hundred. Now, what we don't know is how many of these individuals coming out of state prison, where are they going to be residing? How many are in Oxnard, how many are in Santa Paula, how many are in Ventura? We don't know that yet. But this action today will allow the state to communicate with us, so that way we know a little bit more about the people that are coming back to us, and we can start planning accordingly.
Just got a few people that want to help you too, or help us. Yep, good.
Now, as I understand the plan, although they said on October 1st date, it's not mandated by statute that it be adopted by the board by the first of October, but that would be the goal you were, you reached for?
Well, the state was hoping that the sooner that this is designated, the better the communication.
Right.
For those people coming out. So yes, ideally, the law goes into effect October 1st, the implementation plan will try to shoot for having it in place by October 1st.
Okay.
But yes, I'm aware of some counties not having their implementation plan in place until November, or shooting for December, some are shooting for the end of next month.
Okay, and this body will be operating under the Brown Act?
Yes, we will. And that was the advice of our county council too.
And the last comment I wanted to make is that the statute also requires that CDCR notify the county with at least thirty days of an impending release.
Correct.
So, but I understand that their intent is to provide release packets much further in advance, so that, that way, as you work on this model of what will be the programming and monitoring and decisions that you can work with, you'll have that profile on that release and be able to plug them into it.
Yes, and if it's a commitment from Ventura County, we already have records of the individual coming back. So this gives us time to put together files, just really put things in order to have it completely in place by the time they reach Ventura County on supervision.
I'll tell you, just some of my concerns as this rolls out, and as I say, there's lots of work yet to be done, and actually the realignment piece, there's, there is time for that to develop, is going to be the housing, the jobs, and placement issues. There, you know, there will be, although some come back, they're, they'll come back and there'll be former family members or family members who don't want them living with them. And so we're already challenged with housing issues, and whether or not we have enough community resources in place to breathe that safety net for them. So it's a task, it's going to be a significant task, so.
Yeah, there's a significant number, a percentage of that population coming out that is, that reoffends. And with the new legislation coming out, those people will no longer be eligible to go back to prison.
That's right.
So it's either you go to our county facilities, or we do a really good job at trying to give you the tools to remain in the community and get back on the right path. So state prison's no longer an option for those individuals, so we have to do a really good job. And it has to be a good comprehensive approach that incorporates housing, incorporates mental health treatment, substance abuse treatment, a variety of different things. We're going to have to attack it from a lot of different angles.
And the goal is to change that paradigm of that seventy percent recidivism, because it's why we have accepted that all these years, is that's just how it is. Well, it can't be that way anymore, nor should it be. We can't afford it, nor should it be.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
One quick comment. My understanding is that under this program, they're also pre-trained right before they release the inmates, so they're kind of given orientation there in prison prior to the release, is that, is that part of the process?
Well, those are, those are type of the things that we're working out with CDCR. I can tell you that CDCR has been actually very approachable. Secretary Matt Kate has come to a few of our convenings of chief probation officers throughout the state, and they are willing to do whatever they need to do in order to prepare for the release. The unfortunate part about the state is that they have to deal with fifty-eight counties, and fifty-eight counties do things a lot differently. So they're trying their best to incorporate a lot of different things to appease the counties. So it's, the cooperation has been good. Now, what they're going to be exposed to, or how they're going to be prepared when they exit state prison is really a decision that the state officials make, but it's, at least it's in cooperation with the county probation departments, because we'd like to find out how they've done in prison, whether or not there's any assessments, what the case plan was in prison, how they did on that case plan, and then try to incorporate that with the. then try to incorporate that with the tools that we're going to be using for these particular offenders. So a lot of discussion that still needs to be had before October 1st.
Agreed.
Supervisor Bennett.
Madam Chair, First Supervisor Long, thank you for, number one, I think you're taking a special interest in this and, and, and looking at it with your coordination with state issues and for calling this out for a little bit more conversation. I just want to ask from a big picture standpoint, and it may not be even a fair question for you right now. You're focused on, you know, you've got all the details coming up right in front of you. But my sense is, you know, I mean, the state is doing this to save money and that yet they're transferring funds to us to be able to, to do this. And could you summarize for the benefit of the public? Because there, there, there actually has been, as a result of this, the first significant paradigm shift in terms of the public's attitude about incarceration. Where the public is saying, you know what? We don't want to lock everybody. We don't want to pay for more jails. We want it, we want some other approaches to this. So it, it, I think it'd be very helpful for us to be able to identify how this becomes a cost savings or does it simply become the state initially tells us they're going to fund this and then the state in a year or two cuts the funding and then we're, we're stuck absorbing the cost? Or is this going to translate into lower cost overall by not having these, these people in prison? Can you help me with that?
Well, it is. First of all, it's a big paradigm shift. It's, it's huge. And what I've told staff of the probation agency that in my 23 years as a probation officer, I've never seen such a big shift in the way we handle our adult criminal offenders. Now, juvenile offenders, we've been doing this sort of stuff now for quite some time with a lot of success here locally. But it is a big paradigm shift and it requires those of us who work in corrections with adult offenders to think a little differently. My concern, as is the sheriffs and a variety of other people, is yes, that funding is not going to be there in two years, three years. We're going to push really hard to get the state constitutional amendment to, to make sure that the funding is in place in subsequent years so that way we can do a really good job. But that is my concern as well, is, is we're going to have funding for year one, maybe funding for year two. But since we're doing such a good job, then the state may say, you, you don't need the additional funding. Now, you can do it on your own. So that's a big fear of mine. So, and that's something that we'll be addressing as associations throughout the course of the year with the state. The hope is, yes, they will save money. Incarceration costs are, are the most expensive cost that we incur here locally and also at the state level. CDCR's budget is, last I heard, $8 billion. I mean, it's a significant amount of money to run institutions. From a juvenile standpoint, it's a significant amount and from adult standpoint. So the idea of having success with these offenders in the community focused on really implementing evidence-based practices that drop recidivism and have long-term effect on changes is, is definitely the cheaper option. And that's what we're going to be focused on. Now, I'm not going to say that, that we're not going to need a jail. We are. There's, there's going to be some folks that are going to exit state prison. They have no intention of changing their lives. They're going to come back and they're going to commit crimes and create victims. And that's something that we need to focus on too. And we need to deal with those offenders a certain way. But those offenders that we could program or could change based on tools that we implement and we have a good chance that we can change some long-term behavior, we're going to focus on those individuals. If we can keep them out of coming back into custody by using good community-based methods, then I think in the long run it will save money.
Thank you. Mr. Powers?
Mark, just okay, what, could you give us into the comparative cost differences between incarceration and community treatment?
Oh, gosh. You know, I don't have those figures for adults. I can tell you it's very significant for juveniles because our, our programs that are funded by Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act, we keep track of that cost. And it, it is very significant. With the adults, don't have those figures off the top of my head, but my guess is it'll be pretty substantial.
Ms. Long?
Just under, under the allocation information that's been put out for this one year for AB 109 for programs, there's a separate allocation that's given for the public defender and the DA.
Correct.
And then there's the monies as mentioned for the planning effort.
Correct.
And then allocation for, for training and retention purposes. So total for this one year, it's about 6.4, 6.5 million-
That's about right.
-for our county. So the test will be next year, after we have some experience. Is, is that getting the job then? Is that workable?
Yeah, that'll be something that we'll, we will check. But the, the state has identified some areas that will need some additional money. The one-time implementation costs were, is going to help us out as, as is the, the 200,000 that's related to the Community Corrections Partnership. And I know our partners with the courts, our district attorney, our public defender of the courts, needed some resources in order to handle the revocation process because we anticipate some of these folks will be coming back into our court system. So they were able, we were able to identify and carve out some resources for those agencies as well. So that's all going to help. And this is, the figure's based on a late start for this fiscal year. It was originally more with a July 1st date, but since it's October, so they scaled it down a bit.
And just one last thing, for the public to know that when you talk about the non, 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 certainly the goal is to handle that at the local level, but if there's someone who comes back, they commit a serious offense, they're back.
Oh, yeah, with that account.
They're shipped right back. There's no issue that this is a, will have negative impacts on us for the safety of the community, that we will be on top of this and certainly all the applicable laws for, for arrest and incarceration take place for those serious offenders.
Yeah, the probation agency right now, we supervise about, we supervise well over 16,000 adults on probation in Ventura County right now. This is not something that's new to us. We're used to being out in the community and supervising those people who are pretty high-risk in the community, including sex offenders and people on probation for violent offenses. So this is not going to be new business for us. It's with the additional people coming out, the resources are going to be nice to be able to bring on some additional staff and be able to handle that population. And the way we do business right now is, there are terms and conditions of probation that are ordered by the court. If we have a criminal offender on probation who's in violation of those terms and conditions, we'll bring them right back in front of the court. And oftentimes it's, we arrest them, bring them right back to jail. So yes, definitely, we'll have things in place. We'll create opportunities, but for those people who represent and continue to, to be high-risk to the community, we'll deal with them.
Guess that these people are eventually going to be out of prison anyway and I guess what's happening now is it's all being brought to us in one lump.
Correct.
And, and it really is kind of a test for us, a test case. We know that the coordinated approach does work and is effective in reducing recidivism. But with a recidivism, recidivism rate as high as it is at 70%, by releasing not many, it just, you know it's going to affect our crime rate. And we need to do everything that we can. So you have the full Board support, obviously, and anything we can do to help to avoid that because that is our priority, making sure our public's safe.
And that's a big challenge for us.
A lot on your hands. Thank you for bringing that forward. Can we have a motion? Yes, we have a motion from Supervisor Zaragoza and a second from Supervisor Long. If we could all please vote. Thank you. Now that concluded our consent items.
Thank you.
And we'll go to our regular item. And the first is our Fire Protection District in Item 30 in concert with our Sheriff's Department, Item 35 regarding helicopter services. Chief Roper.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Powers, Bob Roper, Fire Chief, Fire Protection District. Item 30 and 35 are tied together because it's the same contract, Item 30, just to ask for your Board to ratify and approve and give me direction to sign the agreement with the Sheriff's Department. This is our standard helicopter agreement and our great working relationship that we have with the Sheriff's Department for the helicopter services. What we do is we, through this agreement, we have a schedule of what we pay. We also have a fire season declaration where we have a dedicated fire ship. During that time, we have standards that we work with CalFire that will have a ship on contract, will have a ship with a dedicated water dropping tank that can take crews and that can be available to be responded. So for the, the contract, it's pretty straightforward. It's something that we worked with. The difference between the last contract did expire and then this one also reflects the changes of the rate of pay for the sheriff's contract, their labor costs and so forth, as well as our provisions to be able to go over with the US Forest Service on flights and stuff with them. So with that, I'm available for any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from the Board? Yes, Supervisor Bennett.
I just want to, want to confirm my brief conversation with you, but just the only significant difference between this and the past contract is the rate. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's just a minor adjustment of the rate. And there's one other thing, is the other contract had a term. This one will just have a rolling year contract that can be extended.
Thank you very much.
I have a question too. I see that for the first helicopter, it's irregular rates, but on the second helicopter, if we need a, a second one, it also includes overtime rates. Is that, can you explain why that is, if you know?
Well, under, usually on the first ship, it also is our federal excess personal property program ship that has a certain contract dollar amount that we're regulated by, by the US Forest Service on what we can charge and so forth. So that one ship has a certain rate to it. The other ships have, we use the Board-approved rate because they're not regulated by those because those are non-federal assets. So we have those with the built-in labor cost with, with each.
And is, is this carried over also the idea that the second helicopter gets overtime pay? Is that the same as the previous way we did it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. With that, do we have a, we have a motion it looks like from Supervisor Bennett? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Long, second by Supervisor Foy. If we could all please vote. Good coordination. And that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay.
And since we have two items that are basically the same contract, it will be from the sheriff's perspective and that would be Item, was it 35?
Five.
35.
And move, move the item and compliment the two departments for their collaboration.
Right. Second by Supervisor Long. If we could all please vote. And that is approved, both Items 30 and 35. So now we'll go to Item 31 and see if we can get our regular agenda items finished before our time certain. Harbor Department and Ms. Krieger, welcome.
Good morning, members of the Board. Lynn Krieger from the Harvard Department. Mr. Powers, this is a very quick cleanup of the Harbor ordinance which received a full rewrite update in 2008. We're just back to you today to do some cleanup, add in some new state rules and to allow, change our rules to allow paddleboards. So unless there are concerns, I'm here to answer questions.
I heard on the radio this morning, paddleboards are a board.
We have a motion from Supervisor Foy and a second from Supervisor Zaragoza. If we could all please vote.
A great paddleboard debate.
Thank you. Thank you.
Title of the ordinance? Ventura County Ordinance Code, Division 6, Chapter 4, Ventura County Harbor Ordinance.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is Item Number 32 with our Behavioral Health Department. These are several contracts. Oh, I'm, that one was continued. Thank you, Mr. Powers. Item 33 with our Human Services Agency. Mr. Zimmerman is here for this.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the Board, Mr. Powers. I'm Barry Zimmerman, Director of the Human Services Agency. Before you today is to accept and receive a grant for a Veterans Employment Program. It is about a 23-month grant, almost a two-year grant, in which it's focused on 55 veterans will be enrolled full-time into the program. And it is a training program, not a direct job placement program, but to actually assess them and put them into a training program for skills development and then place them into jobs based on the employment areas that they choose to, to be trained in.
Supervisor Foy?
You're hiring a person?
We will hire one case manager, fixed term for that.
Is there any way to get a vet that's a case manager to do that?
Veterans, we'll, we'll look at that. We, absolutely.
Sure. It's an opportunity. Great, thanks.
Good suggestion. We have a motion from Supervisor Foy, second from Supervisor Long. If we could all please vote. Thank you.
It's not at will, that's hired first term.
That's right. Civil service position.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Barry. Great job.
And then it's a good transition now, I think, to go to our 10 a.m. time certain. So let's go ahead and do that because we're not going to be able to finish all the regular items before. And this is, pardon?
Yes.
Yes, so 10 a.m., we'll do the 10 a.m. time certain and this one is a, Mr. Gosgold is going to do regarding a new flagpole.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the Board, Mr. Powers. I think it's timely that we're coming with this item right after the previous one-
I thought so.
-about the new program. So that was well, well-coordinated. As you know, we have a, we have a Veterans Memorial out near the corner of Victoria and Telephone Road. It's been showing its age, as, as you all know. And we've done a few things to it over the, the recent years to spiffy it up a little bit, but we're excited today to come to you and talk about a project that a number of people have come together to take care of for that memorial. There'll be no cost to the, to the county. This is going to be provided, both the materials and the labor, by some folks who I will recognize in a minute. But before I do that, I, I wanted to bring up one of the, the drivers of this, this project. He is a member of the Gold Coast Veterans Foundation and also a councilman from the city of Ventura, Mr. Jim Monahan.
Good morning, Word Supervisors and Chairman, Chairperson, I should say, Chairlady. I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to us this morning. It's kind of odd standing on this side of the podium, but I, I was going to give you a little background on how this thing got started. First of all, like everyone here who's been a part of this project from the beginning, volunteers and contributors, would you all stand, please? I think it's going to be most of the room, but. I, I met with Paul and, and we're both members of the Gold Coast Foundation in Ventura, Veterans Gold Foundation. And Kathy Long is actually one of the founding executive board members of this organization. So thank you for your efforts. I heard you on the radio yesterday speaking, so that, that was good. I'm going to try not to take too much of your time, but I'd like to recognize the people who have been participating. You've met them just standing, but of course Paul Gosgold, Gosgold is the co-sponsor of this event with me. And Shane Warner from the Electrical Workers Union, IBEW, they stepped up to the plate. They picked up the total cost of the pole and actually engaged another union, the Labor Union 535 to join them to do all the work. So we have all the work done. There's no cost to the city, not to the city, to the county. And Tony Skinner was actually involved in this process. And of course, we want to thank the county, Van Hemmy and Don Villafana and from the Taff Electric Company who did all the engineering, design drawings. Dave, it's pretty, pretty hard, how do you say that?
Okay.
Okay, did you hear that? Anyway, we want to thank Bud Hartman from Taff Electric for stepping up to help us with the engineering part of it. And Gary Parker from the Flag, American Flag and Cutlery downtown, is part of the committee. He's not here today, but he's been involved. Then Ron and Lisa Greenwood, who are the, the founders of the Gold Coast Foundation. And I hope that we'll be hearing more about them in the future. We have a lot of good things that are happening. We work very closely with the Veterans Home in Saticoy to help them with the project. And George Compton, as you all know, was the Veteran Service Officer in Ventura County. He is on this Board also and he's going to, he's going to get the flag, the first flag from Washington DC for us. Ken Cousins is a retired sheriff lieutenant. He's on the Board, not on the Board, but he's on the Committee to do this. Gary Miller with the VFW is here. In fact, I have the first check for the expanded project that we want to talk about from the VFW. So we hope to, today we're here to talk about just replacing the flag. It's been there, as you say, about 30 years. Not quite as long as I've been on the City Council, but it's been there a long time. And, let's see here, Jerry English, and of course, Denny Zermino has offered to do all the heavy lifting. He has the cranes and trucks that will be able to move the pole in, out, set it, and do all that. But, the, this whole project started because of Terry Gonzalez. She was the one that had a flagpole at the cemetery that needed a new home. And so, she got together with Paul and myself, and we decided to initiate this program. And as it turned out, we couldn't use that flagpole, so we're going to find another home for it. But this is how the whole thing started. I think, I made some notes real quick last night. Oh, yes, I know. The, we want to expand it to put the flags for the other services as a next step in this program. We'd like you to consider the fact that this pole will be the initial part of the program to enhance this veterans' site. We will put the poles for the various branches of the service behind the wall eventually. We have to raise the money for that, and that's where the VFW started that program. Also, I'd like to start on the walk, the walk from the corner of the intersection up to the memorial site, there's a walkway that's about six foot wide and about fifty foot long. We would like to name that to the Ventura County Walk of Heroes. And we will expand the width of that walk by putting bricks by names of the veterans who have served in the service in Ventura, from Ventura County. And the proceeds from that would go to expanding and maintaining this project. That's not a part of your decision today, but what I'm doing today is just planting that seed that this is what we want to expand this project to keep it going and keep the veterans' site improved. Thank you very much. Paul?
Well, Jimmy, made my job a lot easier. I had all these people, I've been crossing them off as Jim's been naming them. The only other person I'd like to recognize, also a member of the Gold Coast Board and a former mayor and city councilman of Port Weneme, Mr. Tony Volante is here also. Couldn't forget Tony. That's essentially the, the project. Our people, Jim mentioned Glenn Hemmy and Jim Villafana from, Don Villafana, excuse me, from my staff. And we will be providing the oversight and making sure the project is built to specs and meets county standards. And just the same model essentially we used for the firefighters' memorial that was built a couple of years ago. So, pending other questions?
Yeah, I just want to thank Jim Monahan, you know, for doing an excellent job, and all the members of labor, and also GSA, and all the, all the volunteers for this excellent job, you know, for our veterans. And I know that, Jim, are you still the flagman over in Ventura? But I just want to thank all of you for the excellent job, you know, that you have done. And to honor our veterans, you know, I, you know, as you know, my dad was a Second World War veteran, and all the way down to Korea and Vietnam, and my son was in Desert Storm and so forth. So, I just want to thank all of you for the excellent job you're doing for the community.
Yes, Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, a couple of things. Number one, I have certificates I'm going to bring down so that we can present to everybody that's helping with this. And it has made this a much easier project to have the community step forward and, with the tight budget that the county has. So we really do appreciate people from labor, the design people, everybody that's tried to make this happen. I'd also want to, on behalf of the board of supervisors, thank Mr. Grossgold and GSA. Would have been easy for GSA to say, we've got so many other things that we have to do and to not get involved, but their active participation makes it easier for all of these other volunteers to have their efforts coordinated and thought after. I want to thank Mr. Monahan, Councilmember Monahan. He's been steady on this project and veterans' issues in the city of Ventura for a long period of time. And walking in late, Max Vanderwick. I saw Max just show up here, and I want to make sure that he gets recognized. He does our Pearl Harbor Celebration Memorial every year and does a great job with that also. So, I'll bring these down. Mr. Grossgold, for you to handle.
Thank you. One more tidbit, because Mr. Vanderwick did walk in. The current flagpole is actually dedicated to him. There's a little plaque on it, and we will make sure to carefully remove that plaque and transfer it to the new pole so our, one of our most prominent veterans in our county will continue to be recognized. I also wanted to say that we are targeting the nine eleven ceremony this year to try to have it done. I'm not sure if we'll be able to pull that off. We're going to try to have that done, but certainly it'll be done by the December seventh celebration that Max runs for us every year. So, looking forward to having it, the flag flying high over that, over both ceremonies this year.
Thank you.
Come on up, everybody.
You want to read them off here? How about?
I'll read one and.
Okay, good. How about that?
Okay, the Board of Supervisors, County of Ventura, State of California, thanks and commends Ron and Lisa Greenwood of Global Energy for supporting the installation of a new flagpole at the Ventura County Government Center assigned by the Board of Supervisors. And we'll, they all say pretty much the same thing, so we'll give them out.
All righty, good. How about if you just read the name and I'll hand them to people? Ron and Lisa Greenwood?
Jeff McKendry, I'm not sure Jeff is here. Okay, we'll get that to him. Gary Morell is here. Hiding. Jerry English, I'm not sure, he's not here. Dennis Zermino, there he is. Ken Cousins?
He's on vacation.
Jim Monahan, I think he's here.
Is he here?
Dave Fabulich is not here. Shane Werner is here.
Thank you.
Tony Skinner?
Is he here?
He might be. Gary Parker?
I believe Gary's here, isn't he?
Yeah, okay. And David Valenzuela, who is definitely here.
Yeah.
Pending any other questions, we're complete with our.
Just our gratitude and thanks for pulling this together in honor of our veterans, and just really appreciate the, all of you coming together for this, and look forward to seeing it. And I think we probably can do it in time.
We'll try.
Can do.
Can do. Exactly. Get those CBs over here.
Thank you all so much.
Right, get those CBs. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
And this is a receive and file, is it? Oh, they accept the donation, right.
Madam Chair, could we do a quick picture with everybody here?
Absolutely. And I'll wait for you to vote.
Everybody involved in the project. Let's come down real quickly. While we line up.
Since you didn't get a resolution, Max didn't probably.
Oh, let's put the beautiful woman in there.
That's what happens. It's something to highlight. It's something to highlight. All right, if you turn our shoulders, you can type in a little more text, and we hear everybody.
General steps behind me.
Just one more.
Hey, thank you all.
Put your hands up.
I'm going to get a thank you up here.
We now also have to have a motion on item thirty-two, which is on our regular agenda, but will be continued to August second. So if we could have a motion on that. Motion by Supervisor Long and second by Supervisor Foy, if we could all please vote. And shall we go to the policy matter also, item thirty-six? I'm just changing up to bother my clerk, yes. Thank you, Supervisor Bennett, moved to approve. And a second by Supervisor Long, if we could all please vote. Very nimble, Roberta. And now let's go back, then we have the one item left on our regular agenda, and that's, we look forward to the PowerPoint presentation.
Do we have our second tab? [inaudible]
Okay, so now we're moving on to item number thirty-four, which is changes to the posted speed limits on county roadways. And do we want to have staff presentation first?
Do you have anything they want to say?
Happy to hear it.
Good morning, Chair Parks, board members, Mr. Powers. Again, for the record, I'm Dave Fleisch, I'm the Director of Transportation Department of Public Works Agency here for the county. The item before you today is really an informational item, and there isn't, but it's an interest, an item of interest and concern for all of you, and that's why I asked to put this on the agenda. And it has to do, again, with setting, setting the requirements and process we have for setting speed limits. Again, for our county roads, there's essentially three ways that speed limits are set. They're set statutorily, which actually, the majority of our roads are set, and that's the unposted fifty-five mile an hour speeds on the two-lane county roads, a twenty-five in a residential area. And about, almost ninety percent of our roads are set that way. A small percentage are by ordinance, and then the remainder are by engineering and traffic survey. And those surveys essentially are required in order for the California Highway Patrol or any other law enforcement agency to enforce the speed limits by electronic means, essentially Of the sixty-five roads that we have in a county unincorporated area that are engineering, set by engineering and traffic survey, thirty-one of those are discussed in this board letter. The remainder, we've done ten of them already in two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven, have not increased the speed on any of those. And the remaining twenty, twenty-four of those will be not until after two thousand and sixteen. So the purpose of this is just to inform you that through the engineering and traffic surveys process that we do, and some changes that have happened with the manual uniform traffic control devices that controls how we do this, that there is a potential for a change in the speed limits for these roads. So I guess with that, I'll take any questions or.
Great, thank you.
Are there any questions?
Unless we direct you differently, you're going to be changing these speed limits, correct?
Not at this time, no. This is merely informational, when they come up in the years that are posted in, or that are stated in.
That's when the speed limit would be changed.
Well, we would do the engineering and traffic survey, and at that time determine if we're going to change the speed limit. This is just a notification that it might happen.
Because, because your survey here indicates.
Right. The two changes that have happened since a lot of these surveys are done, one is we used to round down to the nearest five. Now we round to the nearest five. So for example, if it was thirty-seven, you'd round to thirty-five, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, you'd still round to thirty-five. At thirty-eight, thirty-nine, now we would round to forty. So that's one change. The second change is before, we have the ability to reduce by five miles that speed limit for conditions not readily apparent to the driver. In the past, we've routinely done that without a lot of analysis. The law now, or the code now requires us to certify the why of that, and if we can't, then we can't reduce it an additional five. So when you look at the list that I provided, there's two roads that I'm, by the current speed that was, was done ten years ago, or the last time the survey was done, I'm pretty certain they're going to happen. The remainder of them, if we can reduce the five because we have conditions not readily apparent to the driver, it's possible they may not increase.
Okay, thank you. If, if I could, number one, Supervisor Parks, ask at the beginning of this meeting, if, in case you missed it, we pulled this item, and I'm, I'm happy to pull this item and have it come back. I'd like to get these comments out there at this point in time. But there has been one change, and that one change is now, if you're at thirty-eight, you round up to forty, right? And, and I've always had some questions about this policy. It's, you know, dictated from the state, it decreases locals' ability to, to control speed limits. And it's a constant problem to, to sit there and not have, you know, local government have, be able to take input from the public and talk about what, what is an appropriate speed limit. So if I could put my first slide up, please, this is the first thing I want to try to focus on. Under the current system, state law allows speeders to set the speed limit. It literally does. The way the state law requires speed limits to be increased based on the behavior of speeders is absurd. It makes speeders the ones that determine how speed limits are set instead of engineers or policymakers. State law amounts to two wrongs making a right. The new requirement that we round up instead of down is finally, I've always been frustrated, now I'm really frustrated with this, because you have to round up. So that means now you post a speed limit from thirty to thirty-five, or some of these are going to go up ten miles an hour, right? There's two of them that are projected to go up ten miles an hour. So you could go from thirty to forty. And then what happens is, here's what I believe lots of people do, they go, well, if the posted speed limit is forty, I can go forty-four or forty-five and I won't get a ticket. And so, people start traveling at that speed, and then you turn around, and when you do your next survey, you're going to have to round up again, right? And I think it has a potential to lead to sort of the steady increase. So, it is an issue that I'm going to take up with our legislatures, because I think this rounding up is finally, it finally really makes this a, a bad policy. My next slide, please. Average speed of eighty-five percent of drivers exceeds a speed limit, the limit's raised, and then, as I said, would be raised again and again. And I just think that many people look at the speed limit and then choose to have their speed be four or five miles over that, and, and it leads to this problem. They don't necessarily sit there and take into consideration all the other things that would make it safe. The, I think it's particularly problematic in the unincorporated areas. In the cities, City of Ventura, and as many people in City of Ventura will say, they've been doing an aggressive job of speed enforcement, and, and people are getting it, and people are more likely to be driving closer to the speed limit. It is very difficult for the highway patrol to do speed enforcement in the unincorporated area. And so if the highway patrol can't do very much speed enforcement, then you turn around, and my next slide here, you turn around, and you have more speeding, and therefore we have this, this risk of the steady escalation of this happening. I think in particular, in all of our communities, we have areas like this, but certainly in the Ojai Valley, we have, we have windy roads, we have narrow shoulders, and we have, for all kinds of reasons, lots of incentives to have people use alternative transportation with energy costs going up, trying to make things more bike-friendly. There's all kinds of reasons why we want people to, to be doing that, and, and increasing speed just makes it less likely and less, less safe for people to do that. Next slide, right? So that's my point. High speeds are dangerous and discouraging to pedestrians, bicycles, and children, just to have too many. So I'd like to ask the Roads Department, PWA staff, to work with my staff to identify specifically the roads in the Ojai Valley where circumstances would justify the five mile an hour decrease based on things that, that people can't see. So I'd like to go over all of these roads, so that's one thing. And I recognize it's a receive and file item, but it is going to come back based on Supervisor Parks, so I'd like to have this come back and have us spend a little bit more time with the legislature. The, the, there are forces in the state legislature, there are forces that lobby the state legislature to have this policy, and I could live with it when they didn't round up, but now that they're rounding up, I just think it puts us into a progressive march in the unincorporated area. It's not good for our communities, not, not good for our citizens. I mean, I, I don't have citizens calling and saying, you know, hey, you know, you ought to raise these speed limits. That's not a core value of the citizens, I think, of our community, that we should be on a steady march up and just, however fast people feel like driving. on a steady march up, and just however fast people feel like driving, particularly over that posted speed limit. That's, to me, that's the big psychological thing. So I'm very concerned about this policy, and I'd like to work more on it. So with that, I'd second Supervisor Parks' request to postpone this item.
Thank you. Comments Supervisor Foig?
Dave, when you do this, is there other things taken into account? I mean, first of all, if we're seeing this quote "rise" that we're hearing about, that these are, you know, people are driving faster, I guess, than the 85 percent. And when you recommend, if you do recommend any of these increases, is it also taking into account the safety record on those roads and everything else?
Yes, there's three things that we look at when you do an engineering and traffic survey. The first is, is we do a, essentially a, a speed survey of 100 cars. We go out with the radar, and essentially the first 100 cars, and, and that's specified on a weekday, not in rush hour traffic, that we do that. And so that, that's how we calculate the 85th percentile. The second are any road conditions, obviously a curving windy road, you have cautionary signs for reduced speed in those areas and so forth. And the third is, is collision rates or accident rates in those areas. And if you have higher than expect or higher than normal accident rates, those are all taken into consideration when we do the engineering and traffic survey, and to set and evaluate, evaluate to set a speed. So it's not just straight the 85th percentile.
And over the years, as some of these have been increasing, these speed limits, have we seen greater accident levels at all, or?
Well, we haven't actually been increasing speeds. Again, we've done 10 roads in the last, since I've been here, and we've not increased any of the speeds on them by doing the surveys. The premise behind the way this is set up is that people should drive and will drive, the majority of the traffic should and will drive at a speed at which they feel safe and comfortable. That's where the 85th percentile comes in. Certainly, there is a concern with cars improving in performance and what have you, that it's harder to feel what speed you're driving in, and there is a propensity that people might drive faster. But we haven't seen any increase in accidents. Again, we haven't raised the speed limit on a road, so I haven't been able to collect any data on a road we've raised the speed limit on.
Right, okay, great.
If I could, I appreciate those questions. But we do have a list of 31 roads that have a potential for a speed increase now, that you've submitted to us, correct?
Correct. Those are the ones in the next three years or two and a half years that we will do the surveys on. And it, the only two that I, I see on here that, that I don't think we, that there's no way we can keep it at the current speed, are the two that are listed in the definite increase, and that's Media Creek and Santa Clara. The remainder of them, the, the current speed limit is within five miles of, of, of the existing 85th percentile speed, and if we can condition those based on my conditions not apparent to the driver, they may not increase.
They, they may not, but the burden is on us.
I have to be able to identify what's not readily apparent, and be able to, to satisfy those. And again, the predominant reason for that is enforceability from the, from the electronic media, the radar.
And you, you surveyed these 31 roads, right?
In 2001, 2, and 3, yes.
Okay, but I'm saying now these, I mean, these, these 31 that you have, you've done an 85th percentile...
No, we have not. What's in here is from 2001, 2002, and 2003. We won't do them again until the year that's required.
Okay, so in 2001, 2002, 2003, this listing here of 85th percentile shows these 31 roads, out of how many roads have a potential increase in speed limit?
We have a total of 65 roads that we do engineering and traffic surveys on. We've done 10 already and haven't increased any speeds. There's these 31. The remainder are in 2016 and after, based on the 10-year requirement.
Okay, all right. So all 31 of the roads that are going to be coming up between 2011 and 2013 have potential increases based on their old 10-year-old with the new law?
If I cannot justify the further five mile an hour reduction, yes.
You would have to increase these?
Assuming the 85th percentile, when we redo the survey, is at, or higher than what's here, yes.
And it could be higher?
Potentially, yes.
Right, in terms of that, okay, good. Thank you.
I know the City of Thousand Oaks has worked, even when I was on the city council, to get legislation to change this system that the drivers determine the speed limit, which is, you know, if drivers are going through a stop sign, doesn't mean you get rid of the stop sign. Drivers are going at an excessive speed for the road safety, we shouldn't be changing the, the road speed. I agree with Supervisor Bennett, and I think we probably all feel, you know, that same concern. And while Supervisor Bennett said he'd like to take this interim continuance to look at some of the roads in his district, to see if they qualify for the 5 percent decrease, I'm, I'm certain there are other supervisors that also have that concern, and would like to work on some of the roads in their areas. And these are particularly on, on roads that are, I would think, have limited sight distance, are twisty, there's residents on there. There's a lot, a lot of reasons where we have to look, I think, a little bit more carefully on these. And additionally, we know that there are measures that we can take to make cars slow down on roads. And we've seen that in Santa Rosa Road with the synchronized traffic signals, for example. The City of Thousand Oaks has done some extensive work on Lynn Road, trying to reduce speeds there. So before we jump to increasing road speeds, I think we need to look and make sure that they really do need to be increased based on the particular circumstances of the road. And secondly, review measures that we can take in, in some of those instances, which could reduce speed. So I, I do have a lot of concerns with this. I wasn't given prior notification this is coming, and that's, that's why I needed to take some time and talk with you on this. So appreciate the motion to continue. Yes.
Dave, when you, I mean, especially a couple of these that look like pretty good increases, that would go from 30 to 40 miles an hour or something, in somebody's unincorporated. Do you also, after you look at that, and let's say you were going to do it, does the high patrol or the sheriff's department, if they patrol these roads, have any input in that, or?
Not directly, but we are required to provide them with the engineering and traffic survey for each road that we do them on, because that's their methodology for allowing them to enforce. Now, we do indirectly from them, we get accident information, and we have any other things that we, you know, where we have normal communication with them on a specific road. And if there's certain things that, that we know from them that we need to deal with, we'll, we'll approach those either through cautionary or warning signs, like we have on many of our roads, that say, you know, there's a curve here, you need to slow down to 35, instead of the normal road speed of 45.
Right, okay, great.
Two, two things, I just, I just want to make sure, I, I appreciate what, my concerns are with the state legislature and the state legislation, not with our road department and your implementation. I think you're, like you said, you, you did the last 10, and you found ways to not have to actually increase. So our road department's handling this just fine. It's just this recent change that says round up when you're at 38 or 39, that has me concerned about this potential rounding up. Final thing I'd leave you with is, I, I, I mean, if you took this, this logic to its, to its next level, you would say, sit at a stop sign, and if more than half of the people roll through the stop sign, then you should get rid of the stop sign, right? And make it a yield, right? I'm not sure that, that, that logic works either, right, as, as you go forward, right? Or, or make it a smaller stop sign, or, or whatever thing.
I would also ask that we direct our CEO's office to look at some, working with the other cities and counties in California to change this legislation. And I just have to express, I have dire concerns about some of these, and would not support them, you know, it's the bottom line.
Just of note, this is a manual that is enacted by the state of California. It's not specific legislation, and it's also a national manual, so it's not just the state that approaches it this way. It's the National Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So this is a standard that's used throughout the country, not just here in the state. And I support what you're saying. And again, part of the reason I brought this to the board is, I knew there were some concerns, and I wanted you to be aware of it, so we can take a look at what we need to go do from there.
Supervisor Long?
Well, and I think we should look at, I know Thousand Oaks has efforts underway, and, and look at their proposal, and see how it might be applicable to us. I know the issue is for the state that there's some uniformity, so that there aren't communities that set quote "speed traps." And, and the issue raised that in the unincorporated area, we do rely on CHP, and we know that they're stretched thin. But to, to look at that Grimes Canyon stretch, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, Grimes Canyon is posted at 50, and you changed it to 60, and one would...
And again, I, I would, I would let you know that that's just the 85th percentile speed. That doesn't mean that that's what it would be posted at. There are other things, like a two lane road like that is, is normally statutorily no higher than 55. So just because it says 60, it's not going to go to 60, and 65, and up to 80. It would stop at, at a point when it, when it, when it met either a statutory requirement or something, you know, people are going to not just continue to drive as fast as they possibly can, because the road is not going to allow them to do that. So in that case, the highest that would likely go would be 55.
And there may have actually been some improvements to these roads since you last, since it was last examined, which may lower it. Because I know, like Sunny Crest, we've done some work on too. So this, this is all preliminary at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would ask too, that you make the, at least the rounds with the board members. I have questions.
Certainly.
So we do have a motion for myself, and second by Supervisor Bennett. If we could all please vote. We'll calm down and move on to our 10:30 time certain item. And this is a, a report from our district attorney on Above and Beyond, a report on crime victims assistance unit. And Supervisor, Mr. Powers?
Thank you Chair Parks and Board members. This is part of a, sort of our overall program, this Above and Beyond program, to highlight two things really. One, services that the county workforce provides that the community might not be aware of. It's important that they understand that. And also to highlight great examples of your county workforce that go above and beyond. They're not just doing their job, they're doing much more than that, because they care so much about what they do and the people that they serve. So appreciate District Attorney Totten and Assistant DA Michael Schwartz being here today to present this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning. We're honored that the CEO's office has chosen to recognize our crime victims assistance unit as going above and beyond. Much of what people think about for the DA's office is prosecuting criminals, and, and the trial process, and, and punishment. But there's another side to crime, and that's the crime victim. These are real people, they're members of our community, and they are affected by crime, often, often profoundly affected in their lives. Our crime victims assistance unit works to help crime victims through the court process, and also to move forward with their lives. We assist about 7,000 crime victims every year. And each one of these are unique human beings. Assisting crime victims can be really emotionally draining work, and it takes a unique kind of person to work as a victim advocate, or as a volunteer in assisting them. Our volunteers and victim advocates really go above and beyond every day in helping crime victims. Here today to explain a little more about the work that we do is our Director of Victim Services, Catherine Dugan.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers, good morning. Thank you. As the Director of the District Attorney's Crime Victims Assistance Unit, I've had many opportunities to come before this board and talk about victims of violent crime. Over the years, you've heard me talk about the circumstances that confront domestic violence victims and their children, about the need for additional shelter beds and transitional housing in our county. You've heard me talk about the trauma associated with rape and child sexual abuse, and the way that that crime reshapes lives, about the grief that lingers in the hearts of parents who have lost their children to violent crime, and about the growing rate of crime against our elders and our dependent adults in our community. You'll likely hear more in the future on these subjects, because we are indeed far from resolution. But today, I want to talk about what makes the Crime Victims Assistance Unit worthy of this recognition. And that, in my mind, is clearly the staff. It really is. In most cases, victim advocates will have their first contact with the victim within 72 hours of a crime. They may meet the victim within hours. They may meet them at the hospital. They may sit in the ICU family waiting area with the family members, while they wait to see if the, their loved one will even survive the crime. They may return to that hospital for a, several days to support the victim and their family. The relationship between the victim and the advocate will endure over years, as the case is investigated and then prosecuted. I have a couple of cases I'm currently involved with, where I have worked with these victims for four and five years now. Victim advocates have arranged modifications to homes, so that families could bring their son home, who was made a paraplegic by a stabbing, and they could not get him home until the appropriate renovations were made, such as a ramp. Victim advocates made that happen. They've transported victims out of county when they are not safe here, when they're being threatened and need a safe place to go. It's victim services that make those arrangements for them, and it's our emergency fund that pays for those transportations. They've helped families of murdered victims with their funeral and burial arrangements. Victim advocates often will attend those memorial services with the family. They've helped victims locate certified vendors for crime scene cleanup. A family should not have to clean up the blood of their own loved one. And we help them find a certified vendor, who is certified in environmental waste management, who can go in, and who can clean that up. And then we will help them get reimbursed for that cost, through the state compensation program. They've helped victims with the cost of cosmetic surgery when the crime has left them with a disfigurement. I've met victims who have had their teeth knocked loose as a result of the crime. We will find a dentist that will provide them the assistance they need to have that fixed, scars removed from their face and body as a result of a crime. We're working currently to have tattoos removed from a rape victim that were placed there by offenders. The mission of the victim's advocates in the district attorney's office is the management of trauma. They accomplish their mission through the delivery of services that help the victim cope with the countless issues that follow victimization. Issues like the payment of uninsured medical bills, access to mental health treatment, information about the court proceedings, and what their rights are within the criminal justice system. The advocate is the liaison between the victim, their family, and the criminal justice system. Even after the offenders are convicted and sentenced in our courts, the victims' needs don't end there. Our advocate staff advise them of their rights post sentencing. They work with the Victim Services Division and Department of Corrections. They make sure the victims are registered for the notifications that they're entitled to. Victims feel afraid. They want to know if that offender has been released from custody. It's our advocates that enroll them in those programs and make sure they receive those notifications. Many victims of domestic violence will never make a report to law enforcement, but they will come to our unit, and they'll seek a restraining order and other safety measures. And they come in great numbers, nearly 2,000 a year. And they're just not ready, for many, many reasons, to make that crime report. But they are unsafe, and they need to be safe, and they need their children to be safe. And we can help them. We have elders who come to us because their grown children are being abusive to them, but they don't want to make a police report. We can help them accomplish a lot of their needs without making a report, though we always encourage and prefer that they report the crime to law enforcement. Some are just not willing. Victim advocates meet their clients in what is probably the darkest hour of that victim's life. And they walk with them through some very dark periods over the next years that follow. And amazingly, these advocates never run dry of compassion, never. I've worked with some of these advocates for more than 10 years, and I can tell you that while they may become tired, when the need arises, they never hesitate to rally, not ever. I can walk in that unit at 5 o'clock, after a very hard day for them, because they move from one victim to the other, to the other, to the other, all day long. And at 5 o'clock, I can walk in and say, we have a rape victim being transported to Safe Harbor for an interview, and I'll tell you, half their hands will go up, volunteering to take that call out. When a victim needs help, they're there. I am proud to direct this unit, and I am really proud of the people that work in it. And that appreciation of their work extends beyond our office and into the community. Today, we have several representatives from interface, from the coalition, Cindy Ovale is here, who also experienced crime herself, and others to just say to these advocates, we so support what you are doing, and we thank you. These advocates also have a way of working collaboratively, cooperatively, with other agencies in the county. It's necessary that they do that, and they do it quite effectively. When I'm out of county, and in, in the Sacramento, or in other counties, I must share with you, that cooperation is not always present. But here in Ventura, we have a victim services community that works together, that collaborates, that helps each other, and we can all be very proud of that. I'd just like to take a moment and ask our victim advocate staff, the district attorney's victim advocates, to stand so that you can see who it is I've been speaking about. Would you stand, please? Would you stand, please? I noticed too, we have some of our volunteers are here too, and I want to particularly notice them. I see Kate back here, and Charles, would you stand for a moment? Thank you. Oh, Nancy. Nancy. Nancy's been a volunteer for five years. As you can see, these are not people who are used to or looking for applause, but they sure deserve it, and I thank you for providing that for them today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan, for the work that you do also, and we can't thank the advocates enough. You have one of the hardest jobs there are and are one of the more needed people there are, so just unfortunately we needed, but so thankful that you're there, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Powers?
Yeah, just a comment and thank you, Ms. Dugan, for the excellent presentation, for all of you for being here today. Just one little story that I heard recently about your program. A few years ago, mother and son were assaulted, and the woman was badly injured trying to protect her son, and she was in the hospital, and Ms. Dugan herself visited her in the hospital, found that she not only needed medical care, but mental health care as well, and was not able to afford it. So through her good efforts and the whole office's good efforts of raising awareness of this situation, she was able to raise donations both from private citizens as well as her employer in the amount of $40,000 to help. Just another example of...
Yeah. I think that case, one thing about that is sometimes these crimes hurt not just the victim and their family, but they really truly injure the entire community. And that was such a case where the community really wanted to help that family. I spoke with that victim just within a week or so, and she lost her boy. Her boy was only six years old. But she is managing, and the last conversation I had with her, she's talking about adopting another child. And that is very life-affirming, and I'm very proud of her because she had a very difficult time. Thank you for mentioning her.
Thank you. Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Catherine, I want to thank you and all the volunteers that are here today. I see Mrs. Kapples in the way in the back, you know, and I've worked with her for many, many years, you know. She had, her son was murdered, and she's always, has done good work over in Oxnard to bring awareness to the victims and to help the victims and to help the parents cope with this tragic happenings that happen to many, many families. So I just want to thank all of you and the DA's office for helping out, and Catherine and everybody for all the good work they've done. And I know that I've worked with Mrs. Kapples and the folks over on the mothers of murdered children, and they do a lot of good work. And I would just want to thank you for bringing that to the public's attention so they can assist in their efforts.
Thank you. I apologize, I didn't notice that Julia was here today, and I appreciate her being here. Thank you. We also work closely with parents of murdered children. There are people who have had a loss we cannot imagine.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, I just want to point, until you went through this list, I don't think I had as complete a picture of how comprehensive victim services are, much broader than I realized. So thank you for doing that for us and pointing that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also thanks to the DA for bringing this forward. Good for the public to hear. We can take, I think, a break now before our 11:00 AM time certain, after we have a receiving file on this motion.
And Madam Chair, for the benefit, I see the sheriff out there, I'd just like to make sure that we do the addendum item 11:00 before we do the...
Strategic plan?
Before we do the goals.
Okay, certainly.
Yeah, so one goes much faster than the other. Thank you.
We will continue now with our July 26, 2011 Board of Supervisors meeting, and we're going to jump right on to, into item 39, and this is a recommendation of Supervisor Bennett and Sheriff Dean regarding hosting a foster children's career day.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. I appreciate Sheriff Dean joining me and moving this letter forward. I also really appreciate Barry Zermelman from our Human Service Agency and Mark Varela from probation, the two departments that have a fair amount that we would have to coordinate with in terms of having the foster youth involved in their programs and stuff. And I've had conversations with both of them, and they both are very supportive of going forward with this effort. So Sheriff Dean's involvement in this, I'd like to point out, I wish I would have had this piece of information as I put my PowerPoint together because I think it's the most compelling piece of evidence you have. I was just talking with Sheriff Dean. Seventy percent of all inmates in prison have had contact with a foster care program. Seventy percent. Think of that number. It's just amazing. And the key to keeping that from happening is education and employment for those people. And I think we all know that the key to employment, particularly in this market out there today, is its connections. You know, you have to, having connected, being connected to people is a huge help in terms of moving forward. So with this, I'd like to just present a few simple things that we've been, we've been thinking about this in our office for some time, trying to figure out how to make this happen. But November 11th, Veterans Day, the county works, and Veterans Day schools are on vacation. And you have to have a day when, you know, the students would be available and at the same, same time, a day that we're working. Same time, it's usually a little bit slower day for us than some other days, Veterans Day. And so we thought that that might be an appropriate day, and we certainly want to recognize Veterans Day also, and I hope that with Mr. Grossgold's help, we may be able to connect with any kind of naval-based Ventura, any kind of military careers that might help, that might be, that foster children might be interested in. And so I see Mr. Grossgold out there, and to the extent that GSA department and working with any of our military come up with anything, that'd be great. But if I could just go through these slides very quickly. First of all, next slide, please. Yeah. It's an opportunity for foster children in Ventura County to learn about careers that people in Ventura County do. We have 8,000 employees here, hundreds of different careers, and it'd be a great opportunity for them. Second slide, please. It gives more meaning to the concept that we are their extended family. If we set up a tradition that annually foster children know that they could, one day a year, have some kind of opportunity to get exposed to some of the... could, one day a year, have some kind of opportunity to get exposed to some of the different careers that we have here. It helps them adopt that concept that we are trying to become that extended family that almost all of these foster children have been cut off from, which is why they're in our foster care system. Next slide, please. The allows the foster youth to feel appreciated, a focus of our attention. And for young people who are, many of them starve for this, this kind of attention can go a long way in terms of having a real impact on them. Next slide, please. And it allows more of our staff, ideally, or potentially at least, you'd hope that it would increase our bond with our foster children. It's pretty hard to bond with kids that you don't ever see, you don't know. But I've seen this happen over and over again. Some young people come just for a few hours in somebody's life and all of a sudden, somebody says, takes an interest in that child, contacts them later, checks in with them in six months, talks to them about what education they need. Those things help these young people so much because they're starved for that kind of guidance. And potentially allow us to guide more foster children through this career search process. And that's, that's it in terms of what I have, this pretty simple concept. And be happy to answer any questions board members might have. Not, not fighting to be the ones to coordinate this, but we're offering to coordinate this because we don't want to throw another burden on, on everybody else in terms of that. But if board members have concerns about that, if there's some other department that wants to do that, certainly be happy to do that. So if any department members, department heads have anything that you want to add, now's the time. Or if board members have any questions, if not, I make the motion.
Does the board have any comments, questions? Mr. Powers?
Supervisor Bennett, we'd be happy to help coordinate that from the CEO's office. I know a lot of county departments already have programs like this for other members of the community and it's incredibly helpful to expose kids to the hundreds and hundreds of different opportunities there are out there in service. So happy to help.
Great. Thank, thank you very much. But with that, I just move the recommended action, which is that the board support the county of Ventura hosting a Foster Children's Career Exploration Day on November 11, 2011. We'll assess it after that. Thank you.
And Veterans Day isn't easy to remember, it's also 11-11-11.
Right?
Well, thank you for bringing this forward. I think you definitely will see a positive change as a result of it.
I might point out, we've been talking about this for quite some time. We did the addendum when we saw that it was a fairly short agenda and stuff. And we wanted to get it done before we go to the break so we can get things organized and departments can start to work. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we can go ahead and move on to our last item, I believe, is our 11:00 a.m. time certain, and this is regarding our countywide strategic plan. Yes. Mr. Carroll?
Morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, CEO Powers, Matt Carroll with the county executive office. And I wanted to note, in addition to the handouts that we gave Roberta, she does have additional copies of the plan in case you inadvertently didn't bring your bound copy that we gave you last week. So here we are, I think some 18 months after we initially started this process. Agenda 29 this morning recommends your board approve the 2011 countywide strategic plan, including the incorporated mission statement, values, guiding principles, strategic goals, and supporting detailed objectives and measures. Additionally, this agenda item requests your board direct the CEO's office to return in 18 months with an initial status report on our progress on the strategic goals, objectives, and measures. And in 24 months, as necessary, to return with an update to the plan. And in general, that's our timeframe. We're proposing that we update this strategic plan about every 24 months, every two years. Of course, we can come back sooner if there's any material changes and that need to be made to the plan prior to that date. This morning, I had hoped to spend about 15 to 20 minutes going through highlights of the plan. Given the amount of information in there, there's 65 detailed objectives and measures. I won't get down to that level today. We're prepared to answer any questions, but also we have agencies and departments who were instrumental in the development of those detailed objective and measures. Here, we're here to answer any questions you may have when we turn it open to questions.
And Mr. Carroll, I know we did begin this quite some time ago. We had some groups form came up with these recommendations. And now that it's all in one place, I would encourage the board to give their input to this because this will be, while it's a living document, this will be our first shot at it. And I would like to see that, you know, we, any comments that the board may have that that can be addressed as you go along. Would that be an easier format for you, or should we wait for the whole presentation on all of them before we get into the specifics?
We can work it as works best. I intended to go through at the strategic goal level by focus area and then open it up for questions. But we can pause at the end of each focus area and then take input at that point in time.
I think that would be more helpful than we'll be able to have input while we're talking about the topic.
Terrific. Okay. The intent today was, and we fully anticipated some input, your board can approve it today or approve it with these modifications or direct us to come back. We can make it work either way. So specifically this morning, I'll be touching upon a brief review of how we got here, very briefly, and then go into a review of the mission statement, values, and guiding principles. And then, as I said, we'll go through the strategic goals by focus area and then wrap up with next steps. This slide depicts the planning process, how we got here. And just a quick review, it was divided into three phases, our planning phase, our preparation phase, and our execution phase. We started about 18 months ago with the Service Excellence Council recommending the concept of a strategic plan to our office. They also recommended the proposed contents and the approach which is up here today. And that concluded almost a year ago with your board endorsing the concept and directing our office to proceed forward. And that wrapped up the planning phase. We moved into the preparation phase after that where we collected candidate N-states. We'll talk a little bit more about N-states. We conducted SWOT analysis at each individual agency and department level and then consolidated that up. And that phase concluded with conducting of individual visioning sessions with members of your board where we took those candidate N-states, what would become eventual strategic goals, and tried to consolidate them, prioritize them, and come up with an initial starting group, a more manageable number. And that wrapped up the preparation phase. Then you'll recall, we went into the execution phase, which began with our day-long offsite in the fall with members of your board and the executive committee. And then we moved into individual focus groups where subgroups of agencies and departments developed the goals and the measures that, excuse me, the objectives and the measures supporting the strategic goals. So that, in that show is how we got here. And it could wrap up today with your board's approval, or in the coming weeks as your board deems appropriate. If you recall, we had a few specific objectives. And I just want to say, a strategic plan, as you know, is nothing more than a communications tool. It's a map. It allows an organization to plan for the future and hopefully serves as that vehicle or that mechanism to allow everybody to work cohesively, be on the same page with regard to those objectives, and move forward. Specifically at Ventura County, we hope to get five primary benefits from our map or plan, as you, as you, as you may refer to it. And the first is, it would be a foundation upon which departments can base their own plans. And that was one of the reasons that the Service Excellence Council brought this forward. They felt it would really be beneficial to have a countywide plan that they could tie their operational and strategic plans into. It was also going to serve as a contextual guidepost for them in developing their recommendations that they would eventually bring to your board. It would serve as likewise a guidepost for your board in evaluating those. If they're evaluating those recommendations, if they were inconsistent with the plan, you might want to redirect them back and reconsider those. And then it was also to serve as a mechanism where your board could understand in more detail which programs and activities that the county contributed to specific strategic goals or objectives or activities. And finally, it would provide your board with measures, very objective, measurable attributes to gauge our success in moving toward those. So that was the objectives for our plan in general. Now, our plan is composed of three, three components primarily, the updated mission statement, values, and guiding principles. 19 strategic goals was the final count we came up with. If you recall, we started with about 200 in those visioning sessions, worked it down to 50, and then we came out with 19 really core strategic goals. Then we have 65 detailed objectives and supporting measures. And that's the concept of the plan. And we'll go through the first two today and then leave it to your questions and input on the third component there. With that, let's go through the mission statement. And the last time, I believe, this county updated the mission statement was in the 1990s. And this mission statement, as it stands today, is exactly how it came out of that one-day offsite. There's been no changes to it. It differs from the previous version. If you look in the budget book that has the current version or the previous version, when your board approves this, this mission statement talks about providing public service and support as opposed to infrastructure. And it talks, and it concludes by focusing on safe, healthy, and vibrant communities as opposed to the previous version, which simply focused on a healthy economy. So it's a little bit more holistic, and I think it really reflects the services, support, and the entire community focus here, not, not just those more finite version of it earlier. So if there's no questions, I just wanted to briefly highlight the changes in there and indicate that your approval today will include this mission statement. With regard to values, your board at the day-long offsite with the CEO at the time, Marty Robinson, spent a great deal of time in this area and made some significant changes. But it's interesting the changes you made, is that you culled items out of this area. You didn't add a lot of new items to your values, but you focused on four key attributes. And those are ethical behavior, transparency, and accountability, equitable treatment and respect for all constituents, and excellence in service delivery. So you really kind of focused on those items that resonated across the board, and you removed several other items that were in here. Moving to our guiding principles, these were a work in progress at the end of our meeting last fall. And since then, agencies and departments in the form of the Service Excellence Council went through this several times. And they did a couple of different things with it. They added some of the values that were removed from, from the previous section, the value statement, and we incorporated them into the guiding principles. And then we also added some, some additional items that dealt with the concepts of being competitive with regard to our services and costs, empowering our workforce to think independently wherever possible, and proactive planning. So I won't read through the guiding principles here today, there's several of them. But suffice to say, they're to serve as a litmus test to hold up all the organization's actions and planned decisions. And if they're consistent with those guiding principles, they can go forward. If an agency finds they're in contradiction with them, they'll probably want to rethink them. But that's how we use these guiding principles. So that's the first component, the mission values and guiding principles. If there's no question on those, we'll move into the review of the core of the plan, which is the strategic goals. As I indicated before, they're grouped into five areas. There's nothing magical about these areas, what we call focus area. They were simply a means to allow us to combine or identify agencies and departments that could work together to define the detailed goals and objectives, our goals and measures. You'll see, in some cases, they reflect the county organizational structure, such as environment, land use, and infrastructure, and public safety. And others, they just represent areas of focus, importance to the county. Examples of that would be a county workforce and financial stability or good government. So again, those are just a mechanism to combine the strategic goals.
Matt?
Yes?
On, do you want the information now, the feedback, for example?
At any time, Supervisor. We'll take it.
Yes, I think it'd be good time to do it now, if you have that.
The, one of the concerns that I have is the, under the good government focus number one, you have objective number three that talks about increased effectiveness of community with the, our communication with the public. So they have easy access to information and to convey our message in a way that's relevant and understood. One of the concerns that I have is that when a customer comes in and they want a specific item, and whether it's a permit, whether it's, whatever it is, they, there's really, or maybe there is, and I don't know, a one-stop center where they can stop and get information and say, I want to get a permit for, to build a, an addition, or to add whatever. Do we have one-stop center where they can stop and say, I want to build an addition to my house? And I stop at the center and they tell me, okay, you're going to follow this 10 steps before you start incurring money to build whatever you're going to do?
Okay.
Do we have that, so they don't get to step four and five, and they've already incurred hundreds of dollars and so forth? And you get to step five and they tell them, no, you can't because you have not, or you're not zoned properly, or you don't have the proper facilities or infrastructure and so forth? Do we have that type of, of structure? And should we have one in order to, to make it easier for, for our customers, our constituency, to make sure that they're following the proper procedures and, and county standards and so forth before they expend additional dollars? And that's probably maybe under focus one, maybe under objective three, where we can increase our effectiveness in communications between, between our agencies to make sure that they follow the rules and regulations and standards and so forth. To convey that message to, to our constituency, to our customers. So when they do apply for a specific, whatever they're going to do, they have a 1 to 10, or 1 through whatever. So they're not surprised at number four or five step.
And Supervisor, if I wanted to piggyback on that.
Let me just, maybe to help them where you're going, Supervisor Long and I were talking about, maybe we're near the guiding principles, where it said delivering service and customer, delivering services and customer service in a business-friendly, and it could be also a constituent-friendly way, cost-effective manner. I guess that was one of the things left out in that, you know, is that business-friendly way?
And that was my last part.
Yeah, that's, I mean, part of that, because I think what you're saying is, we're probably getting in the really detailed part that's probably deeper than what Matt was getting in. But what are we doing to make it simple, easy, and friendly to the constituent, to the person who comes over to the house, the business who wants to apply, who needs that?
Exactly right. And by the time we get to step four or five, they've expended several thousand dollars.
Right. So how are we being friendly to that person who's coming and working through that? So we've done it, made it easier so they know everything upfront as much as possible? And I guess that's what I was seeing here. How are we as a, as a county? Because remember, our job, really, government is only here to serve the people, right?
That's right.
That's our job. So how are we doing that in some effective, business-friendly, even where Supervisor Zaragoza is going with that, to make that so simple? And I think we have some of that. I know we have pre-submitment processes and all those things available. But I guess one of the things that I saw in that too is, where is that business-friendly, constituent-friendly way that we're going to do that? And I know that people have that attitude out there, they want to do it.
And the checklist, so they don't get from one to 10, and when they get to number nine, they say, you can't do it.
You know, and I'm thinking that there's going to be well over a dozen comments. So maybe what we can do is just kind of take that input and come back again. That's my feeling on this. The, on that very same objective, I was thinking of inserting the word transparent. So it's just increase the effectiveness of our communications with the public so that they have transparent and easy access to information. Or somewhere the word transparent, I think would be good there. We convey our strategies in ways that are relevant and understood. We convey our strategies in ways that are transparent and easily understood. Supervisor Zaragoza called to strategical one, objective three.
Page 17, we're looking at objective three and under the good governance and performance of organizations.
Strategical number one and a good government.
How can we improve on that, Matt, you know, to?
We, in that, you mentioned a couple of specific areas. You talked about permitting. And we have a communication plan as one of our goals in the permitting area or in that area. We have communication in general with our cadre of public information officers. So I think if we, if we add those comments to there, there's other goals that will help that area as well, or other objectives that will help that concept.
Could be one of the objectives, and then maybe measurements later on.
Yes.
How do we? Because I think the most critical thing on that would be, number one, do you have any water? You know, if you don't have any water, don't continue. And number two, you know, do you have, is it the proper zoning? I'm using that as an example. It could be any other agency for that matter. But I think we need to have a checklist where the client can come in and say, yes, you can do it, or no, you can't, and don't expend any more dollars than you should.
Mr. Powers?
Yeah, I think we got it. It's in terms of expectations of the customer. What's it going to take from get to here, from, to get from here to there?
That's right.
All the way through, right up front, so everybody understands the expectations. We're all literally on the same page. So I think we can certainly communicate that in here. And to your specific point, I believe, in discussions with Mr. Stevens, that there is a plan review committee that does do that. But we will continue to build on that.
And a one-stop website.
Right.
And we've spent a lot of time in there.
And the Holocella program?
Yes.
Okay. So this, again, we are looking at good government, financial stability, or focus area, number one.
Right. And, and what I'd like to do is focus on that area at this point with any comments you have. There's three, these are the three strategic goals. It's kind of a starting point. As you said, it's on page 17. And if there's any other comments on this section, these are the three goals in that area for good government and financial stability. And I think there's nine underlying objectives and measures.
That's all of them.
Okay.
Thank you. That was my only comment on this topic, focus area.
I did want to-
Supervisor Long, did you have one? Okay. Okay.
Okay. Yes. Number two, maintain financial policies that are responsible. When we use the word responsible, what are we trying to say? That we're a fiscally responsible county in that sense?
Absolutely.
And that's where you're trying to stay with that?
Yes, yes, yes. In general, some comments about the strategic goals here, these are the core of the plan, and I just wanted to note that many organizations stop at this level in their strategic planning. They don't go into the objectives and measures. We at Ventura County with that value of accountability went further, we actually define underlying objectives and measures that go with there, but as I said, we'll work through each of these, there are 65 goals and measures that support these, and we'll make them available as we go through. In this case, we had one item on objective number three. Our office worked with, and I will say in focus area number one and focus area number two, the agencies that worked on this plan, on this portion of the plan for the detailed objectives were the CEO's office, CEO, HR, GSA, county clerk and recorder, and the auditor controller's office. So if they have any questions that they can answer, they're available here today. If there's any other comments on focus area number one, which is good government, financial stability, we'll take those at this point.
I think that they are very good measures you have there for your strategic goal number two particularly.
Okay. Moving on to focus area number two, this has to do with county workforce.
And may I just make one other comment? I was confused when you used the word measures, because in some cases, like under strategic goal number one, the measures are, well, I guess you want your measurement, your measures are actually measurements, right, of performance, so in, and when you talk about, you know, what are your reserve levels, what is your credit rating, so those are real specific numbers you can look at as opposed to action item measures to achieve your objectives.
I would say that is the case in the majority of them, they are numeric values, but also in other words, in other areas, they are yes or no. So they're, the key here is they're verifiable and quantifiable. An example of that would be where we're going to develop performance standards, we don't give a number for that we're going to develop performance standards, we say the standards are published or not, so it's a verifiable state, not necessarily numeric, so it's either done or not done, or the key word there is verifiable and quantifiable on our measures, wherever possible.
And Matt, I think that by putting that in, though, you raised the organization to a different level. When you can verify, you can measure what you're trying to accomplish, it gets rid of the gray area, it makes it more black and white, and I think that's very good.
That's typical Ventura County. Okay, moving on to focus area number two, that deals with county workforce, as I said, those same agencies participate in that, being the auditor controller, CEO, CEO, HR, county clerk and recorder, and general services agency. And there's three strategic goals, the first one has to do with attracting, hiring, and retaining staff, the second one with empowering employees, and the third one to develop and employ. I do want to comment on that, on the strategic goal number three, we've always talked about succession planning, or we, for a long time with your board, we've talked about succession planning, and there, this strategic goal number three is unique in that it not only talks about the concept of succession planning, but it talks about the particular attributes we're looking for in our leaders. So that's a little different, and I know that's a change from when you saw this strategic goal last fall, it brings those specific attributes out, things such as ethics, innovation, service, accountability, and peak performance, that's what we're looking for in our leadership corps. So there's, I believe, eight underlying objectives and measures, if there's any questions with those, we'll take them at this point.
Yes, I'm wondering with the attract, hire, develop, and retain an effective, diverse, that's the strategical number one, effective, diverse, professional, dedicated, responsive team of employees, and you have certain measures down here, but I don't see one which I would think would be a goal, is the time period it takes from recruiting to actually hiring, because sometimes we lose qualified candidates because that time period can take too long. So would that be a good measurement to help achieve that goal?
Supervisor Nicole here?
Madam Chair, members of the board, in the optimized contemporary recruiting strategies using the Internet, we should add to that, one of the sub-goals is shorten the length of time between when they apply, when they hear from us, and when they know whether or not they've been selected.
Okay, so I would then add that one, you don't have it in there currently?
We can add that as a part of that objective one, because it's clearly a part of a good recruiting strategy.
Or as a measurement, that is something you can measure, how long did it take? You know, if it's taken three months, we got it down to two months, or for example.
One of the difficulties we have is our obligations to do outreach differ from those in the private sector, our obligations to comply with standard civil service procedures are different than the private sector, so we are to some extent hampered by our own requirements to ensure we get out the breadth of our recruitment, what it is we're trying to achieve, and in order to do appropriate two-tier testing methodologies. However, given that, as an understanding, we will add both of these. One is the objective of trying to do it sooner, and the other is the measure is, just as we've done in our HR academy, we've been able to shorten our time from 90 days to 70 days. So that's part of our goal.
For example, doing things simultaneously, you know, so you can move it forward, because we do lose candidates, so thank you for incorporating that.
Happy to do it.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Saragosa?
John, on the number one to attract, hire, develop, and retain, is that part of the succession planning, and are you going to train individuals to, within agencies, to take leadership roles or become managers or?
Actually, the method by which we do it is we provide the leadership training, and it is up to the individuals to avail themselves of, we don't actually order people to follow up with that kind of training, it's really, that's a case where it is made available, it is made attractive for employees to do so, and we hope they'll take advantage of it.
So the employee then will ask the director or the agency that he would like to get trained for job X or Y or so forth?
They can certainly ask that, we have, you've most recently, this board has approved our strategic leadership program, which we have brought in and contracted with, and there are people from every agency in those programs, and that's in fact how it happens.
Mr. Powers?
Yeah, I believe in the strategic goal number three, the goal there is to create those opportunities-
Correct.
-for people who want to move up and develop and become leaders in our system, and encourage that.
Yes, there is a specific objective for that particular act.
Thank you.
Anything else with county workforce?
And you have found that leadership program to be rather unique and effective, and something we, that particular one is the best one we know of.
Well, John's talked about, but boy, if you talk to the graduates, they could probably tell you a whole lot more, but I'm very excited about it.
This was actually brought to us by our own management council, they had sponsored it, they had funded it originally. It was the highest-ranked response from our participants that we had, a fully-developed consultant-level-based operation coming out of the county of Santa Barbara, because as you know, they have a very heavy focus on employee training and development. And we looked at whether or not we could build, replicate, or purchase somewhere here a certain level of program, and in fact, it was just difficult to try to match what they in fact already have available, and we've already made use of.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Bennett?
I do have something on county workforce, I've heard Mr. Carroll say, is there anything else on it? Particularly the strategic, strategic goals two and three, which is empower employees at every level to provide county services maximum effectiveness, and develop employees to become leaders, promote ethics, innovation, service, accountability. The reason I want to talk about those two is that I think they really, for me, relate to the whole issue of our counties embracing this strategic planning effort and this attempt. I mean, a peak-performing organization is an organization that's constantly trying to improve, and I think that's really the goal, that's what we want. We're going through this process just so that we provide at least some kind of adequate blueprint to focus those energies, so people say, "Okay, while we're doing this, what, at least, you know, from the Board of Supervisors position, what are things that we'd like to have focused on?" But I think we have to recognize that every time an organization does this, you cannot create the blueprint, the plan, well enough that it, by itself, because you've created it, it's going to work, or that it's ever going to be completely comprehensive. I mean, the objectives, the measures that we have here are, by comparison to what we're trying to accomplish, pretty narrow, but that doesn't, you know, and so this could, that could be viewed as a criticism, and people could sit here and say, "Here we go, another one of these plans." I just want to use this time to say, I'm not as worried about whether it's this measure or that measure, it's that we're making a good faith effort to, I try to identify areas of focus that are important, that would be good for the organization, and then inviting, encouraging, and hoping that this thing's really going to be successful if people embrace it, and if people go, if people get on board and go, "Hey, I know I've been through these before," but a reason why a lot of these don't work is there's sort of a passive-aggressive resistance, there is, there is just a pooh-pooh it and dismiss it right off the bat, and in a big organization, that can happen really easily, but to the extent that we don't make it, it's not going to be because of any one of the flaws here, it's going to be because we as a group have just decided that we don't really want to, want to embrace it. And so as you talk about county workforce, I wish I could come up with a goal that very clearly said, how well do we embrace sort of each one of us doing our share to try to make this happen, and everybody's got a different role in terms of trying to do that. I really appreciate the attendance here today of all the various departments, and hope that that message can go back as deep and as broadly into the organization as possible, because the way we will be most proud of ourselves, and the way we will earn the most public support for government, which is at a, certainly at risk right now, is by being that kind of just top-performing organization that's responsive, ready to change, innovative, all those things that take a lifetime to build in terms of the public's confidence in government. So that's the challenge, I hope we can embrace it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else on focus area number two, workforce? Those are very good comments, and you know, I will say in general, the team struggled, and the direction they got was, don't take on any, any major new initiatives unless we're willing to commit resources to it. So a lot of this was encapsulating a good story we already had, the work that was undergoing, but there are many instances where they have taken that challenge and they have brought new ones, so it's a combination, and they really struggled with the objectives and measures for exactly the reasons you noted. They don't really, in all cases, reflect what's intended, or address all aspects of the strategic goal, and that's why a lot of plans stop at the strategic goal level. It's very difficult to take that next step, but we certainly gave it an effort here. Okay, moving to focus area number three, this focus area had to do with, and it's one of the more challenging focus areas, environment, land use, and infrastructure. The agencies that participated in developing the objectives and measures for this are the county assessor, public works, resource management, airports, harbor, the fire district, APCD, GSA, and the sheriff's department. It's quite a diverse area, and I want to recognize Chris Stevens, who took the challenge to coordinate the efforts of this group, and that was a big undertaking, it's a very comprehensive area, and this is the area where I'd say we struggled the most with the dichotomy between the detailed objectives and what's intended by the measures. But there are four, excuse me, the strategic goals, there are four strategic goals, the first one has to do with promoting land use and policies that ensure the preservation of ag land and natural environment, and maintaining ag's economic viability, that's, I know, a kind of a historic focus of Ventura County. The second strategic goal deals with infrastructure, public facilities, and associated services to protect our community, environment, and economic well-being, that refers to things not just county facilities, but county infrastructure such as flood control channels and watershed and those type things, that if they weren't there, would cause economics hardships, if they failed, would cause economic hardship. Strategic goal number three had to do with championing cost-effective energy reduction measures through independent efforts, and when we say independent efforts, we refer to county operations, what we can take on independently, but it also talks about through regional, and through regional initiatives and public-private partnerships, so it focuses both on internal county efforts for energy conservation as well as external efforts. And then finally, strategic goal number four has to do with water in all its forms, whether it be watershed, whether it be drinking water, whether it be groundwater, ensure sustainable, cost-effective supply of quality water resources for the residents and ecosystems of Ventura County, and take a leadership role in reducing water usage. So that's focus area number three, a lot of underlying goals and measures that go with that, and I know some of key concern to your board.
I have a few, Supervisor Saragosa?
I was just going to say that I think number four is really important, because I've been working with Mr. Pratt and Mr. Bacala, especially over with the water supplies in El Rio and Nylone Acres, and I think that's really important, this number four, to ensure, you know, the sustainability and cost-effective supply of quality water resources to our residents, which we're going to start working on pretty soon, you know, on that too, so.
That is a goal where we've actually, we stated a reduction percentage of 15%, and I think a lot of, that's unique among jurisdictions to actually, they have the carbon goals, but we've actually set water reduction goals as well.
And the reduction, and, and the proper supply and proper, you know, water measures at them, or actually following the estate regs, and I think is important too.
Supervisor Floyd?
You know, one of the things I don't see in this piece, and it says promote the land use to hold the environment, natural, but we have nothing there at the end that says while, in strategic one, agriculture, continue economic viability while protecting the property rights of the people that own this property. We find that balance between protecting and not overdoing, where we've seen over the last few months, we've had, you know, a lot of the farmers in here on some of these issues, trying to find that balance so that we can protect their rights, so we can continue this viability of this land. So it doesn't get so far to one side where the farmer says, "I can't continue," so I think we, we need to make sure we have the balance on that one piece, right there. The other thing goes down to strategic three, you know, regional initiatives, private-public partnerships, but also help the private sector, people who've come up with these energy projects, make sure that the county is on board with, trying to work through and help them do these and not put too many roadblocks into some of these areas, I would think that, because there's going to be, as a matter of fact, I was hearing of one just recently where a windmill or, you know, turbine was going to be put up to help possibly try to do the whole power supply of a concrete plant or something like that, where they were going to try to do, didn't know transmission lines, all that stuff, and I'm sure that'll come before, you know, planning at some point, well, we want to make sure that if we're looking for these kind of things, that we as a county are helping do that, so I imagine there's some way that we don't want to deter, even though we probably don't want to deter, but we just don't do that, we're going to, we're going to find a way to help them provide this kind of energy if this is one of our goals. So I think that would be another piece that we'd like to try to find, and that we're going to help that private sector be as productive in finding energy solutions too.
Do you see where strategic goal number three could be enhanced to include that?
Yeah, I think that's, that's what we're saying, is is there a way that, you know, we put something in there about the private, we always talk about public-private partnerships, but what about just the pure private partner, the private ones who are going to come in and do whatever they can do, as somebody says, I've got, you know, I hear the other day out in Oxnard that one of the big Dayton has a million square feet, they just sold all the top of their rooftops for solar.
So just incorporate-
Yeah, just find a way to incorporate that we want to be-
Where it says independent efforts?
Yeah, maybe through independent effort, independent private efforts, that we want to be-
Private things?
Yeah, maybe it's private, we just want to know that, the idea that something comes up before somebody, we as a county are here, we're here to help you, provide, we're all looking for energy solutions, but we're here to help make sure we don't put a roadblock in there, we're going to help you get through this. I guess that's kind of where I would, would look at too, and that also goes back to the property rights issue, it's okay, it's their property, they're trying to do an energy, how are we helping them with their, to do things on their own property? So I think that would be part of my goal there too.
I do know we have some, I want to say, I don't, preferential treatment, or unique processing mechanisms, maybe expedited processing is a better way to say, for, for energy-related permits and processing-
We've taken some of your stuff, right.
We don't reflect that in here, so.
Yeah, I think that's something we could include, applications that are successful using that, and we have a streamlined process for residential, I know at least, energy efficiency projects. And as far as property rights goes, you know, we do have a requirement here that, you know, within locally adopted laws, ordinances, and policies, I mean, certainly, private property rights, you know, are legally required.
I think they're legally protected, but I think we just as a county should say, "Listen, we're not going to trample over your property rights, we're here to try to make this balance that we enjoy here in Ventura County," is what I'm looking at.
To assist them is what you're trying to say, to assist the private enterprises, do you?
Then some of the comments I have- Then, some of the comments I have, and I'll just go ahead and read them all off, because there's quite a few. And this, again, is looking at the, the focus area, environment, land use, and infrastructure, looking at strategic goals and, and measures, so. The strategic goal where it talks about promoting land uses and programs and ensure the preservation of our agriculture and natural resources, and below that you have a key message, preservation of our agriculture land is not just an economic end, but a means of upholding our county's identity. We must keep development in step with the desires of our community. I think not only preservation of our agriculture land, it should also say preservation of our agriculture land and open space. Because it actually is an economical, an economic benefit, particularly out in my area, it improves property values, and everybody enjoys the ability to recreate and all, so it does have a lot of value. Objective one, it reads, "Ensure the development in the unincorporated area is consistent with locally adopted laws." Instead of, to me, a more positive one, if the, the goal is to promote land use policies and programs that ensure preservation, then the objective would be more like encourage urban development to occur in cities instead of in the unincorporated county. It's more of a positive, to me, instead of saying ensuring where development should occur, we should act, ensuring the development in the unincorporated areas, you know, and looking at how we develop in the unincorporated area, rather, I would think the objective, as our guidelines for orderly development call, would be encourage urban development to occur in cities. Objective two, you talk, it talks about assessing, assessing changes in state law in a manner which ensures the continual participation of local agricultural producers. I don't know how assessing changes in the law. Implementing the county's Land Use Conservation Act, Williamson Act, is a, a way to meet that objective, but I'm not so sure about assessing. And in addition to that, when we're trying to help preserve agriculture land, I think we, in addition to the Williamson Act, there's also the whole issue of water. And I know we have that elsewhere in this, but I think it's important to recognize that if you don't have water, you don't have ag land, so I don't, maybe an objective could be help ensure water sources for agricultural use. Other, other objectives, and again, this is for policies and programs to ensure preservation of our ag land and natural environment. Other policies could be, provide buffers between farmland and urban development. That's something that is, the county puts forward. Another, another objective could be ensure envi, ensuring environmental mitigation measures are consistently implemented between departments. I think that's a, one of the problems that we have is, we'll have one department, say you have to preserve this area, and for example, the fire department will have to clear it, so trying to get consistency with that mitigation measures are consistently implemented. Reduce the use of toxic pesticides and encourage use of integrated pest management techniques. I mean, this is, again, something that the county is doing, and it helps to ensure the preservation of our ag land and natural environment, you know, to be able to do that. Also, in encouraging preservation of open space, or preservation of the natural environment, we, we have some things that we put in, in place that allow for dedication of open space land, as well as dedicating open space through easements, through acquisition, through donations. These are all ways to ensure the preservation of our agriculture land. And then when we look at different kinds of measures, number of acres of agriculture land converted, I think that would be a measure of, of whether we've met the goal of preserving agriculture land. Another measure could be the additional acres in the Land Conservation Act. I know we have percentage of acreage remaining in productive farming and completion of processing LCA applications, but for me, a measurement of how many acres of land have been converted, how many, how many additional acres are in the Williamson Act? Number of successful applications for those subdivision conservation easements that we have made available. I don't know if anyone's taken that up yet, but that would also be a measurement of, of our ability to help preserve the natural environment.
Supervisor, can you repeat that last one?
Yeah. Number of acres of ag land converted, additional acres in the LCA, in the Williamson Act? Number of successful applications for subdivision conservation easements? This is something our planning department has made available. You can subdivide any lot that is non-conforming if it's for the purpose of a conservation easement. So, to me, that would show some success towards preservation of natural resources. The number of acres that have been conserved, dedicated, donated, that's a measurement. Percentage of land at the ag-urban interface, that includes a buffer. So, when we're approving development projects, what is, are we maintaining that ag-urban buffer? And that's a, a way to measure that. How about number of county general plan amendments or zone changes that reduce the acres of open space and agriculture land, another measurement of that? And that's just strat, strategy, strategic goal number one.
Okay, I knew, I knew that one would, would get some discussion. And let me just touch upon the, the first objective in here. And, you know, we wrestled with that, with the, with your first, with our first meeting with you Supervisor Parks, where the thought was, "The underlying plans and policies may change, and this objective says we're going to be consistent with those rather than drive a specific policy or position into the statement." It doesn't mean we can't, but I just wanted you to know that was the logic behind that, to say, "We're consistent with your board's adopted policies, protocols, ordinances, so we can take this next step, and we'll go back with Chris and his team and, and bring a revision here." But I just wanted you to know the logic behind that statement there, that those underlying items could change depending upon.
Right, and when I see, and then, objective number three is just successfully implement the recently updated ISAG. Okay, well, not only do we have the ISAG, we have the buffer ordinance, we have the conservation easement, we have, you know, there are, there's like what I just read off, a host of things that the county allows to help preserve agriculture, to help preserve open space, other than just the ISAG. And that's why, if we're calling out the ISAG, it seems to me we should be calling out those other measures that weren't just approved in the last year, but a few years ago, but are important to the preservation of both open natural resources and farmland.
Sure. That, that was focused on because it is a work in progress, and it's a substantial commitment of staff, resources right now, so we wanted to reflect that's a desire, direction we've received, and that there are investment of time and energy going into that. That was the intent behind that.
Okay, and, and so maybe if you don't want to call them out as separate objectives, we can put them in a listing, as you have some, some items in a listing. Right to farm ordinance, we could get the agriculture buffers in there and, and some of these other objectives that I mentioned, I'll be glad to provide you the list, too.
Okay.
Then, strategic goal number two, it talks about infrastructure, public facilities. Is there anywhere in here that talks about roads and transit service, for example?
There are a couple, there is an objective related to alternative modes of transportation such as bicycle lanes, and no, we don't address all the permutations that are on there. This really reflects, it doesn't mean roads isn't in there, it just reflects, I think, right now, things that are under the agencies that participate. I don't know, Jeff, do you want to talk to that? Did we envision roads in here as part of public infrastructure, I would imagine?
We did.
Certainly within the scope.
Good morning, Chair Parks, my board members, Mr. Powers for the record, Jeff out of Public Works Agency. The only thing in here that talks to that, Supervisor Parks, is objective four. Objective four under strategic goal number two, and it specifically calls out transit, but not roads. It talks about bicycle facilities, and that was due to the conversation that we had around the table, I think this was in the breakout session at the all-day meeting.
Okay, and, and so, I'm not saying roads needs to be in here, I was just wondering if it was, because we talk about, you know, infrastructure and provide, and public service, that, public facilities, I think oftentimes of roads, because that's one thing that government is huge on, is roads. But in that objective number four, again, that's an objective in the goal of providing infrastructure, public facilities, and associated services that effectively serve and protect our community, environment, and economic well-being. When, objective four, I would include the word parks, because you're developing, develop an inventory of candidate funding opportunities to support the development and expansion of bicycle facilities and transit facilities. We should also be looking at funding opportunities for our parks, which are facilities of the county that will go back to the environment portion of your strategic goal. And parks also could be listed in your objective number four. Again, when you're looking at funding opportunities, not just for bicycle facilities, transit services, I would even do paths, you know, we do trails, so include trails and parks. Those are all soft facilities, but facilities nonetheless.
Excellent point.
And then finally, under strategic goal number three, this talks about championing cost-effective energy reduction measures. Nowhere do we mention tree planting, and again, this was something that took a little while to accept putting into the Climate Action Plan, but this would be a perfect place to put that in, because you actually use less energy if there's shade, for example. And also, a, a tree planting program incorporated into a public facility projects. We can also assist neighborhoods to reduce heat islands and broaden our watershed protection district, nurse, tree nursery, is one of the things we can do. And all those are go-to a tree planting program as a part of the strategic goal to champion cost-effective energy reduction measures.
Okay. Certainly can be included in there.
And then on strategic goal number four, this is ensuring sustainable, cost-effective supply of quality water resources. I don't see encouraging the use of recycled water instead of potable water for landscaping. And when 70% of our potable water's being used for landscaping in residential areas, that makes a really good, I think, objective to use recycled water instead of potable for landscaping. Oak Park does that really well now in all their medians, I think it's, we're, we're doing a really good job there. And that, that completes my suggestions on that focus area.
Okay, terrific. Certainly take that back and convene around the table. Any other supervisors in this particular area? Thank you for the input there. That's, gives some real specifics there we can take a look at. Okay, moving on to focus area number four, and this has to do with community well-being. And the agencies that participated in this particular focus area included the healthcare agency, the human services agency, the area agency on aging, and child support services. And there's six strategic goals here, and the first three are listed on this slide, and they deal with primarily the healthcare agency. And I'll just read through them real quickly. Strategic goal number one is set the standard in healthcare excellence by providing quality healthcare in an integrated, fiscally sustainable, and culturally sensitive manner. Focus there is set the standard in healthcare period, not just government healthcare. I know they're very passionate about that. Strategic goal number two has to do with communication and education, promote an increasingly healthy and well-informed community. And strategic goal number three, provide the community access to an increasing range of public and private healthcare services in their home community. And that's really official endorsement of the concept that we're actually putting facilities out in the neighborhoods to keep people from traveling. And I know Mike can talk on that, but it certainly is an effort your board has supported and one that they have future plans for in the healthcare agency. So, that's what that refers to. And I'll just finish up this, reading through these. There's three more goals in this area, and these have to do with some of the other agencies aside from healthcare that participated. Strategic goal number four is ensure that individuals and families are provided timely and efficient assistance to maintain or sustain basic needs and transition quickly into pathways of productivity and self-sufficiency. I know in the offsite, the concept of quickly transitioning to self-sufficiency in our safety net environment was, was key. Strategic goal number five and six have to do with children, and a focus area of your, our special emphasis area of your board. Strategic goal five, ensure that all children at risk receive the best treatment services to achieve the greatest success. And strategic goal number six, promote and provide for preservation of healthy and safe communities so that all children may grow and thrive. Now, those are pretty high-level. This is an area where I felt the agencies did, and I think I mentioned this in our rounds, did a terrific job, coming up with very succinct, measurable objectives and measurement criteria. And there's quite a few of them, we actually had to ask them to dial them back, they really took a lot onto their plate. But we're open to comments on this section now.
I know we have specific goals for children and families, and I'd like to see one for senior citizens, our older adults. And one I suggest is increased access to resources to senior services in line with the growing segment of this, of the county's population. And one of those objectives could be to provide support for older adults who wish to remain at home instead of moving to more expensive assisted living.
Anything else matter?
I have one other, and also in measurements under strategic goal three, which talks about providing the community access to an increasing range of public and private healthcare services in their home and community. I wasn't sure whether this would go under public safety or here, but looking at the number of mentally ill in the jail, you know, to me, that's a, a measurement, and it shows that, you know, if we can reduce that number by providing, you know, treatment facilities, and, and we do have some listed here. But to me, that specific measurement, I think, would be beneficial.
And perhaps the lowering the recidivism rate as well, which we're already measuring in that district.
Right, right. And you mean recidivism rate overall or for mentally ill?
For mentally ill.
Yes.
We do have an objective in safety about the number of transition plans developed for the mentally ill, but we don't talk about reducing recidivism in that particular area, so.
And the number that are in jail. Because that's, I think that'd be a good measure. If we're doing it effectively, that number should go down.
Excellent.
That meant, Chair, that senior assistants, would that be goal number seven, or strategic goal seven, is that? Just add to.
My thought is that it could almost be its own strategic goal, and if not, maybe under strategic goal three. But I, I kind of like calling it out separately since we've done that with a.
That's, that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, I would, too.
Any other input on that focus area?
Appreciate the add on, on the seniors, and I appreciate the fact that we've recently had the foster care, increasing number of foster care homes. Thank you.
Okay. All right, rounding the bend to the final focus area, which is public safety, and these are deceivingly simple, but they're, in that they were three strategic goals, but if you look at what they mean by these or the underlying objectives and measures, even though there's not overwhelming number of those, they, they take a lot on their plate to achieve those. And there's three strategic goals. First one is maintain high-performing public safety services. That deals with the ability to respond and, and respond in a timely and effective manner. Strategic goal number two is to pursue successful early intervention strategies to reduce public, future public safety splits, and you know Ventura County's been a leader in the early intervention area, and this formalizes and adds additional emphasis to that. And then strategic goal number three, in the event of being, coming in offender or dealing with offender to engage in those efforts in an effective manner, so engage in successful methods for dealing with offenders. So, it covers the whole gamut there, from response to.
Because this is good stuff here. We say maintain high performing public safety. When you look at this county from fire, should the DA, the sheriff, but we are a very safe, safe county. They've done a tremendous, this county's done a tremendous job with great leadership in those areas. How do we put, instead of just maintain high performing, but really put something that tags it to make sure we don't lose that level of, of this, you know, one of the safest counties around in all these different areas, you know? I'm trying to think of it that way because we could say high, you know, high performing. Yeah, we perform well, do our things, but we're still seeing us slip. I mean, so we can know that, people know that we've spent a lot of money and resources, board pours a lot of resources into all these different agencies to make sure that they do provide a safe community, which is the well-being of the community we heard before, is that well-being. So in order to make sure we can measure that or we're doing something like that.
Well, those statistics certainly are available. I don't know if any one of the agency heads wants to talk to that. If you look under public safety focus area, it was that the very first thing under there is remain one of the safest counties in the nation through coordinated, efficient and effective public safety services. So that wraps up the.
Right, that wraps it up. I guess if we can measure that, yeah, if we can say somewhere in that safest part, that's what I think the key is because I'd hate to have all the generations who've worked before us. We don't want to lose what we've put in. But maybe Mark has.
We want to mention Mark Verilla.
Yeah, that's great.
He's done the job of coordinating our public safety group.
Right. No, it's a good stuff.
I couldn't have done it without the help of Elaine Crandall, who's sitting quietly here. She was really one of the main motivators to get us together and get us focused and get us finished. But that was the first thing we talked about, that we know that Ventura County is one of the safest communities in the nation. So that was kind of our overarching theme when we came up with these specific strategic goals, that we wanted to continue being one of the safest in the nation.
Mr. Vre, could you move in front of the microphone?
Oh.
Thank you.
So you're saying is those goals that we see in all these are really focused back on this whole thing to continue the safest?
Absolutely.
And that's what I wanted to make sure that was somehow communicated because that is really the goal.
Yeah, and all of us in the public safety committee, we take a lot of pride on being one of the safest. And that's one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we continued. And by doing that, we wanted these object, are these strategic goals to focus under that overarching theme of continuing to be one of the safest.
Right, right. Okay, I appreciate that because that's really what I was wanting to see out there. Good.
Madam Chair, there's a, or maybe a Mark. Does the, the realignment goal would be, let's say, number four, to be successful in the realignment program that's going to be happening here pretty soon? Is that, would that be one of the goals that we're looking at to be successful and the methods for dealing with the realignment program or?
We talked about strategic goal number three, that we kind of had the realignment idea in mind when we are really trying to implement some good methods and some approaches and practices are going to be effective with the offenders that we're going to be getting from the, from the state. So absolutely, we were, we had that in mind when we were talking about strategic goal number three.
That's number three then with the offenders. So maybe, maybe, maybe a number four where you are going to be successful or maybe not too successful because you won't get enough money to.
Maybe expand.
From the state.
I actually think all three strategic goals can wrap around that realignment effort because that, those are, become what are basic principles and how we, you know, how we, how we practice public safety in this county. So I think they're all three captured pretty good, actually.
There are certain specific milestones Mark referred to in his earlier presentation that are key dates that we might incorporate at the objective level meeting those key dates that might address your concerns or comments supervisor.
Okay, so because that's coming up, you know, something that we need to look at.
Madam Chair, I appreciate the simplicity of this, just straightforward, you know, you're going to provide the services, successful intervention and deal with the offenders that are like that. One, it's an observation I'd make, and I don't have a suggested change at all, but under the first one, maintain high-performing public safety services, under our measures, we have all kinds of measures. I know none of those measures deal with crime statistics or, you know, patrol, the level of patrol or anything like that. I'll just read them to you really. Public safety training mandates are met, percent of multi-agency debriefings, annual preparedness review, containment of 95% of all wildfires, activation of county emergency operations. So I raise it as a question. I don't have a solution. There may be reasons why it's not in there, but I raise it as you're doing, you know, any other review of this in terms of the rationale for not having anything about.
Do you want to comment on that? Which is crime rates specifically and reduction in response.
Either crime rates or maintenance of a certain amount of patrol or what's that? Yeah, or response, you know, those kind of things. I see Sheriff Dean popping up and it may be, there may be good reason that's not there. So I didn't participate in.
Is that also, is that also encompassed in the safest thing by that or?
Yeah. Maybe.
Morning. As we went through this, it was interesting group because you had fire, and then you had a DA, and then you had sheriff, and then you had animal services. And we're all together and we kind of came with a decision to kind of go generalities because crime stats come out every time. And we have comstat, which I shared with you during our, during our buzzer presentation that deals with all that. So I don't think we went through and identified every single measure that we were going to, that we were going to address or use. And I think that's why we stay in generalities.
Thank you.
But crime stats will continue to come out, as will the comparison to what response times and comparing them to boust activities.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sheriff, you know, when adding to the realignment thing, maybe a measurement would be how many inmates we process during the realignment program. That might be a measurement too.
Oh, I guarantee you, you're going to be well informed of how many inmates I'm dealing with. But I think, like Mark mentioned and Matt mentioned and Supervisor Long mentioned, those, as we went through realignment, we thought all three of these goals would, would address the realignment issues.
Okay. All right. I just figured it'd be a measurement for more money, you know, in the future.
That's why I'll be talking all of them.
I may on realignment. I think, I think it's a laudable goal that we successfully implement realignment. The problem is, right now, we really are not completely sure about what realignment's going to look like. The administration has been changing kind of the definitions along the way. I think there's an acknowledgement even at the state level that the funding they have set aside thus far does not appear to be adequate to fully implement realignment. So I think all of us have the goal of implementing it successfully. I think generally, most of us believe local government is better at dealing with offenders because we know them. We've dealt with them before. But I'd be a little bit uncomfortable as district attorney, putting too much specificity in a strategic plan when we really don't know exactly what it's going to look like from the state.
Or maybe in the 18-month report, when you come back, we'll have some.
I think that'd be a perfect time to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments.
Any further comments input on public safety? Thank you Sheriff and Mr. Totten for your input there. All right, to wrap it up this morning, just a little bit about next steps. And depending on what your board decides to do here today, you can approve what we have, you can ask us to bring it back before any basic approval, you can ask us to approve what we have today and then bring back just the incremental changes. So whatever the comfort is of your board, let's talk about next steps. Our office in the form of Elaine Crandall has begun working with the agencies and department anticipating eventual approval and implementation. And she's done, or she's working with them in three avenues. And the first has to do with helping each agency and department identify a champion for the particular goal, the objective and the measure so that we, that person can help develop implementation plans. And we're staying very high level with the implementation plans. We don't want to dictate too much to the departments. Let them take, but the implementation plans, we'll talk about major milestones, who's responsible, and then the reporting mechanisms back. So that's the identification of the champion. Also, the second effort there going on by Elaine is developing, as I said, those basic implementation plans. And then finally, defining what we have up here on the slide with the objectives we have. Linda, our supervisor Parks, you mentioned that there were some questions as to whether there was a quantitative measure and as far as numeric or just a yes, no, or a, or a black or white measure there. Each of the objectives we have laid out today need to be applied, a threshold that says when we come back to your board, we will report that objective against either a red, yellow or green status. Our intent is to come back with a pretty basic report here, something you can review very quickly. But if it's red, it's got little or no progress. If it's yellow, we're making progress, but there's difficulties or challenges. And then green means it's on track, fully met or exceeding the goal. So for each of our objectives, Elaine's going to work with that champion and define where on the spectrum that, that measure will qualify as red, yellow or green. So she's working that. And when we have a final approval of the, of the plan, then we'll begin in earnest the implementation efforts for those that haven't had to move forward already. With regard to timeframes, we talked about that a little. The hope is to get approval of the plan, if not in July and the August timeframe. That could slip a little, but that's our objective here. Will take 18 months, a number of months to get implementation in, in order. And then about a 12-month period to allow progress to occur. We'll take a snapshot in approximately the February 2013 timeframe. And that snapshot we'll then bring back to your report, or to your board in the form of a report in March of the following month of 2013. And then we talk about convening the next update of the plan. And in general, we talk sometime between April and July or August, we'll convene the group and bring it, bring the update back to your board. But knowing that's also budget time. So depending upon the extent of changes, I think the next update to the, the plan will go in much quicker fashion than this one did because we've got our process down. We have our strategic goals, which won't change much. The objective is made, but the strategic goals likely will not change much over time. So we may be able to bring that back as early as the July, August, or it may slip into the fall, but about 24 months from now. So that's the next steps. And I appreciate your going through these. I know it was a challenge, the format to try to do this in an open forum, but I think we got a lot of good input here and we'll take those back. And now just let us know how you'd like to do a kind of a staged approval or ask us to bring back the updates.
Supervisor Bennett?
Madam Chair, my sense is I didn't hear people say that they had problems with the things in the report. I heard people say there were other things that they may want to add to the report. So with that being the case, I think it's most, it makes the most sense for us to go ahead and adopt the report so that we can get moving on these things and then have staff come back with their evaluation of these suggestions and that, and we can, we can do add additions to this. But I don't think there's any reason to hold up all these other things. So that, I didn't hear any, I didn't hear any of these things being objected to at all. So that'd be my sense for the board before I made a motion. I'd love to hear what other people thought.
Madam Chair, I would, I would suggest a little different step, and that would be to have comments made from the dais incorporated. Lots were made so that we all have in front of us then and clearly understand what the changes and additions were. It is an 18-month process from that time forward. If we could have this back to us by the last meeting in August, you know, we have a, comes out a week ahead of time for any other clarity and we take the action in August. I don't disagree. I think the majority of it is, is exactly captured from our meetings and our, our large group meetings, our small group meetings and, and very good work. And I think that it's an excellent strategy blueprint to move forward with. But that would be my thought.
Supervisor Long, the only question I have, but certainly don't, if they could do it by August, that would, you know, before we left. The only question I have is given the number of comments that are made and the level that may take in terms of analyzing what would be measures for those things and the discussions that take place. But if they think they could do it by August, I'd be happy to do that.
I know as far as my comments are, I have measures proposed as well as the objectives or changes to objectives. But there are some here too that I, you know, I don't know if we really want to approve a measure for ensuring development in the unincorporated area is consistent is, the measure is the number of successful legal actions challenging county-approved development. I mean, we could have 12 successful legal actions or we could have zero. And I think zero would be good, not having any challenges, you know? So I would prefer just taking, taking these comments, let staff look at them and whether it works and then bringing it back.
Yeah, I agree with that too.
I will say, given the number of comments, we have five days to do it, to publish it next week, five business days. So I think that will be a challenge and we'll give it our best, but it's to get the groups together.
I think it'll take as long as you need. I don't think it's the end of the world. I mean, you guys have done some great work, Elaine and Matt, you've done some, all the people that got involved, there's some really good stuff here. Because strategic plans are a map. What it also gives you when somebody starts to go down a path, you go back, remember what we agreed to? So that's why I think it's so important that you do it right and have it done. So if it takes us an extra week, a month, it's, it's great. You've already put a lot of time into it, so I have no problem. I didn't wait a little bit.
I think we can do it in relatively short order. It's just with your break upon us, it's going to be a challenge to get it done in five days and then published. And we'd like to give you time to review what we come up with next time in one-on-ones before we bring it back.
Yeah, after the break is fine.
Maybe the first meeting in September then.
Okay.
All right. I'll throw the motion forward that it, that work on it and bring back a done product in September.
If we could all please vote. Mr. Powers, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Chairman Parks. Just a couple of comments, real quick. A comment was made earlier about making sure that this is embraced and utilized and not put on a shelf and gathering dust. And we certainly appreciate that. And there's a couple of ways I think we're trying to do that. One is to tie in the measures that the departments are already using, either because of regulatory reasons or operational performance reasons, not to have this be one more headache they have to deal with, but tied into what they're doing. And to that end, we've also included it as part of the budget process so that people look at it as part of, you know, what they're doing in terms of their budgets. And I think we saw that with your board this year in terms of some of the priorities that you had in adopting programs like keeping seniors in their homes and out of nursing facilities and so forth. So that, that all ties in well. And I think that that's one of the ways we're going to do to, to keep it meaningful. And then just to echo the comments about the great work that Matt Carroll and Elaine Crandall did, putting this all together and all the department heads. It's, as you said, it's deceptively simple. It takes a lot to distill all that information down into this manageable plan. So great work. Thank you.
And to department head, they were actively participating and engaged, so we couldn't have done it without them.
I too want to really thank you for putting this together. And I hope you see my involvement as just really caring and thinking it's very meaningful. So I want to make sure that we do our best and I'm really delighted with what we have. And as you say, it's a really good blueprint and it will help us as, as we move forward with agenda items. We could point out at the agenda item that it meets this goal. And I think that incorporating that as we move forward will be real helpful.
Thank you, Madam, and all the agency directors. Thanks, Mr. Parks.
I think I should incorporate that in agenda.
All right.
Right, that's what I'm suggesting. It will actually be part of the agendas. We have recommendations, we have the fiscal, and it could be what goals it meets.
All right, we'll see you back after the break.
Thank you.
Good work.
Does the board have any other business?
Item 37.
I'm glad I asked. Okay, item 37 is to receive and file our correspondence letter there. If we could all please vote.
Yes.
Okay, and with that then, I, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.
Good work.
Does the board have any other business? I'm glad I asked. Okay, item 37 is to receive and file our correspondence letter there. If we could all please vote. Okay, and with that then, I, we will stand adjourned.